I'll call the June 18th Manhattan City Commission meeting to order at this time. First item of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And Item Two will be Commissioner's comments. So I would ask Commissioners at this time, if you have any comments?
The only comment I would have is that on behalf of this community in the Northview area, I am thrilled that the water level is declining and has been continuing to decline ever so slightly this last week, but it is. And so I think Ron Fear is going to say more in a little bit, but just to express some relief and relax a bit from that brush, I called it, we returned from the brink.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I was looking at the monthly notes from our city manager, and one of the things I've noticed is, and I could be wrong unless I read it incorrectly, compared to last year in May and this year in May, last year we had 4,402 potholes filled. This year it was 14,146. And that's a huge, huge amount of work. So I'm glad, we still have a lot of work to do. I know you guys are getting a big headache trying to figure out which obstacle course to follow as you navigate to wherever you need to go, but we are working on the potholes at the same time. I also want to take a moment to thank the Juneteenth Committee. You know, typically we just have one day, and this time we had two days, and it was extraordinary, not only the audience, but the talent was extraordinary. So I just wanted to take a moment and thank the committee members by name. David Baker, Herb Ellie, Debbie Nuss, Alan Nesbit, Richard Jones, Betty Jones, Javale Roan, Derek Thomas, Blaine Hope, Alberto Jamot, Jornina Watts, and Sonya Baker. Thank you so much. It's a small group of people that have probably been there since four or five in the morning till close to midnight. Sometimes the sound system may not have been working well on Friday, but still, what a turnout. And it's a wonderful community that we live in to have such, something like that for two days.
Maybe just a couple of things. One, to follow up on that, I was able to participate in some of the great events over the weekend, and I think it's kind of typical of what goes on in Manhattan almost every day, but certainly on the weekends. And we had an opportunity Friday night to participate in the Cowboy Poetry Contest that was narrated by Ron Wilson, who did a terrific job again. And so we had eight contestants, I think, in the regular forum, and then seven in the humorous category, and we had some great judges. We were there with Senator Kasabom, Judge Noos, and Coach Snyder, and some other great people. Senator Kasabom asked me what was going on in Manhattan. She said, "It's been a while since I've been here, but why are there so many people downtown?" So I tried to explain to her, you know, this is not just an isolated event. We have this kind of thing going on just about every weekend, whether we're in the park or downtown. And so she was quite impressed. I mean, she hadn't seen some of the growth we've had, just some of the infrastructure growth. So I was pretty pleased by that. We had a great flag-raising event on Friday morning on Flag Day. So thanks very much for doing that. We really appreciate you and Troop 74, Stormy, for your participation. And then on Saturday morning, we got all set up and tried to help the Juneteenth Committee a little bit, and read the proclamation at 11 o'clock, and then Usher came back and read it at 6:30 to a kind of a different set of people. And I'll just echo, I think the activities that were put on there were just extraordinary. And from the growth of this over 30 years, starting in a backyard, and then dedicated people working on this every single year made it into what we have today. So our expectations are pretty high, but I think they're meeting them every time. Wanted to talk about construction just a little bit. There's construction going on everywhere, and I think our guys are doing a great job in managing all of that. But from time to time, things happen in right-aways and easements. So if you have a neighbor or you yourself sees something that doesn't look quite right, just call in, because the guys are more than willing to come out and figure out what's going on. Just don't have them sit there and worry about it. So we've got a great staff, and they're working really hard on that stuff. I don't know how many folks have seen the documentary on KKSU. It's about the flood in '51. And it's all black and white, not too good sound quality, but it tells you something about living in those times when communication was limited. And you saw the water coming. People didn't know exactly what to do, but they did it anyway. They had everybody turned up in boats to evacuate downtown. And then the radio stayed on all the time to let people know what was happening. And then at the end, we had all of these people coming from around the outskirts of Manhattan, farmers coming in with large-wheel tractors to get people to safety and to do some things, and then others coming from out of town to help clean the city back up. And you can imagine the conditions if you've got five or six feet of water downtown Manhattan along Points Avenue and all through the southern part of the city. So it was a, if you haven't seen that, you might try to catch it on Channel Eight. It really takes you back and shows you what resilience the city had then and how hard people had to work to get back in shape. Also wanted to talk a little bit about the recent acquisition by the RCPD of what's called a Bearcat. This vehicle was purchased with impounded funds. That is, when drug arrests are made, sometimes the vehicles and sometimes the cash associated and other things are put into a fund that can be used to supplement our police departments and our safety departments. So in this case, last year, we made the decision to buy a vehicle that has some shielding on it. It looks a bit militaristic, but I can tell you this, that it's necessary. When we had the unfortunate incident with Officer T.D. last year, it would have been very good to have a vehicle that could have quickly responded and gotten in between that officer and the person that was in the house. And we had, at that time, instead rely on a vehicle coming out of Junction City or the FBI, who has a vehicle like that. So time is of the essence in things like this. And this vehicle will only be used in extremists. That is, if there's a threat to life, and that's when that'll roll out, and the director will be making that call himself. So it's not something that's just going to be used willy-nilly. This is an emergency vehicle of the highest order. So I just wanted to clarify that, because some of the things you've seen in the paper offer some kind of an explanation, but not a very full explanation. So did you want to talk about the?
Yeah, I'll just follow up with kind of where kind of things are from a community planning perspective with regard to flood prevention and preparation. I, too, want to echo the extraordinary cooperation and coordination we've had among all of the regional community service and emergency services agencies and personnel. It's been a great effort, and I would just caution folks, we appreciate not having to meet at the EOC every day or being there for 12-hour shifts. And, you know, there's a lot of work that's gone into that, and we appreciate the lake being back down to 1128. But I just wanted to reflect that, you know, that's only eight feet from where we were, and it took us a while to get down there. Matter of fact, over the last 10 days, we've only gone down about a foot, because we've reduced the releases, because they've got out of their surcharge pool, and they're getting back to more their regulatory pool, which is governed by conditions on the Missouri River, which are forecasted to remain high for most of the summer. And so the discharges will continue to be low, but we only dropped a foot in that eight-day period. And there's been two periods where we went up a foot a day from the rains that we had. And many of you know that we're here in '93, that those big rains came in the middle of July. So you'll continue to see a lot of the things we put in place at different parts of the levee for protection, so we can re-establish pumping stations and that sort of thing. And hopefully, we won't ever have to use them, but we're prepared to if we need to. So thanks, and just stay aware of the situations. Thanks.
Now move to Item Three, which is the Consent Agenda. And as most of you know, the Consent Agenda are items that are either housekeeping in nature or those items that we've considered before and might be up for a second reading or some other adjudication. So at this time, I'll ask the Commissioners if there's any comments on the Consent Agenda.
I just wanted to comment on Item P regarding Community Development Block Grants. It's a little-known program, not a ton of people know about it, but it's essentially a federal, a grant we get from the federal government yearly. This year, we got $556,000, which is a little less than last time, but so grateful that we got that money. We target projects to low and moderate-income people with that money, so housing rehabilitation programs. We do a lot of good work with organizations like MEI for Housing Stabilization Programs, things of that nature. So just know, every year, they talk about the federal budget. Community Development Block Grants always come up. Just know that that's a program that does a lot of good here in Manhattan for a lot of people, so I just wanted to point that out.
I'd like to point something, several things out, actually, but Item J on the Consent Agenda is an update of the Drainage Design Manual Update. And that is really related to the high water that we have been experiencing here and the drainage issues. So it's been 20 years, 25 years, since that manual was updated. And so I'm excited to know that that's in the works and being revisited. We talked, the Kimball Expansion also has to do with the roundabout there. And many of you, over the years, have expressed some consternation with that roundabout at Grand Mir and Gilbert Hills, anyway. And so they're going to take a new look at that and do a new study about it, to see, is a light needed there? Is nothing needed there? You know, what is it that's important about that site? The other thing I especially wanted to mention is the, on the Consent Agenda is the Friends of Peace Memorial Performance Audio. And I'm pleased to see several members of that committee here for the piece about the audio. That's the one remaining piece that needs to be installed in the auditorium so that people will use it more. And if you've ever sat through a production there, you know what the audio has been like, hit and miss sometimes with the microphones. And so I'm excited to see that completed. And it isn't a glamour kind of thing, but it's a very functional level that they're able to fund, and it'll get us going. I want to be sure that the city, I don't know what your plans are, but I want to be sure that it's secured, so things don't wander off, because that'll be really important, that we have that equipment for some time to come. And also that the KSU Athletic Department is stepping up with a $3 million commitment and memorandum of understanding to assist in the funding of the north campus corridor. And in case you haven't had a chance to read our agenda, that's a really important thing. This Community Development Block Grant money for housing is very important, and it's what we have to use. We don't have another fund to use to help rehabilitate some of the housing we have here. So I think that's all. Thank you.
I just want, I was going to talk about the K-State Athletics as well, so that's good that that's been confirmed as far as the memorandum of agreement, the MOU. A couple of weeks ago, we had talked about large vehicle on city streets or residential parking. So for the second reading, I just wanted to be clear that when we discussed it, it was $25. So the fee, the fine is now $50, is what we're going to be approving. And the second component is, we were going to just have permits maybe twice a year. You can get a permit three times a year in a 12-year, yeah, in a 12-month period. And the other change is that we will allow a temporary parking permit if your vehicle's going to be longer, for a longer period of time, if you have a vehicle or somebody's visiting and they happen to have it in front. Just make sure, I don't know what the timeframe is. If we approve it tonight, when does it officially go into effect? And how does the public know about it?
So it's publication and looking over here for this.
It'll go into effect on June 25th.
June 25th. So that's not very long. So we need to make sure that people know, because this is summertime, and people are going to be visiting a lot during this time. So before anybody gets fines or fees, let's make sure there's a little warm-up period to that, a little adjustment period for the community, especially if the fees, the fines are $50 or if they don't know. We don't, this is, I don't want this to be a gotcha kind of thing, but a learning period for a couple of months at least, so people understand what's going on. Thank you. Go ahead and make a motion. A public comment?
So at this point, I'd like to ask for public comment on any item that has to do with Consent Agenda. If anyone wishing to make a comment, please come forward and let us hear from you. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the Commission.
Mayor, I make a motion to move forward with the Consent Agenda, approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes?
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We'll now move to Item Four and Item Four A. This is General Agenda. So Consider Amending Resolution Number 00516-A, which establishes a benefit district to fund sanitary sewer improvements and awarding a construction contract for 17th Street Sanitary Sewer Improvements between Houston Street and Pierre Streets. And our briefer will be Brian.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
I'm Mr. Mayor. Do you get this class on sanitary sewer?
My light doesn't work, but it's, thank you.
As the mayor indicated, this is about 17th Street Sanitary Sewer. And for four of you, this is actually a repeat, because you were on the Commission when we passed the public hearing, generating the petition in the benefit district in order to finance the improvements. For Commissioner McKee, I got a little background section, tried to get you up to speed on this. So this project has been around since about 2010, 2011, when we discovered there was multiple lots, seven of them actually, that were on one lateral. They all connected together and then ran down through some private property in some backyards, and then went down to 17th, where they connected to the public sewer system. We've designed a project. We've secured easements. We've gone to bid. Unfortunately, the bid was above the engineer's estimate. It was also above the petition amount, which brought us back forth before you to talk about what we want to do. If we want to move forward and increase that petition amount, if we want to award a construction contract and move forward, if we do increase the petition amount, then how do we want to break those costs about? And that's all in the PowerPoint, and at the end, there's a discussion section, and then some questions we need answered. So with that, let's get started. Again, the agenda, we got a background and a timeline. We've got our project goals, costs, and then direction from the Commission. Background, so project started in 2010, 2011. We held, Public Works held at least four neighborhood meetings with all of the folks that, several of them are in the room tonight, that can talk about the different concepts that we went through and the different difficulties that we had to get this project to bid. After we've got some neighborhood consensus, then we came back before you, got a petition established, and then moved forward to easements. The City Commission approved a 50/50 split and authorized construction in 2015. That 50/50 split is spelled out in our purchasing policy or our benefit cost share policy. Easement acquisition started then in 2015. In total, there's been about $26,000 of easements that we've purchased for this project. Each property owner of the seven has received anywhere from $2,500 to $8,000. We did have appraisals done on a couple of properties, which obviously cost a little bit more money in addition to what they got paid for the easements. That also delayed the project a little bit, because assessments take a little while. Project was bid twice this year. The first time it was bid, there was no bids received. So we talked to some contractors about what we could do to get some interest in the project. We extended the completion time. We extended the time of 17th Street being closed. So 17th Street will be closed if we do move forward with this project, and it'll be closed during the school year. Went back for another bid. We got one bid on the second bid, and that bidder, if awarded, would start this fall, is what they've indicated.
I do have two questions on the background.
Sure.
Reading the packet, so the benefit district was established in 2016. You may have just answered the question, but we didn't issue a bid until three years later.
Correct.
I mean, why was?
Easement acquisition. We spent three, we spent three years trying to get seven easements.
When we established the benefit district, was it known at the time it would take that long to do easements? Because, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a pretty long timeline.
For easement acquisition, that's not very long at all. KDOT estimates about 24 months to secure easements. We went a little bit longer than that, just because we went nearly to condemnation with two properties.
So do people understand when we issue, when we create benefit districts, that the estimate that we give you, we're likely not going to bid this project out for three years? So, I mean, it's absolutely going to be higher three years later?
No. Typically, easements don't take that long, especially in a district where you have participation with the neighborhood. In this case, five of the seven properties are owned by out-of-state rental companies, and so their responses back to us weren't as quick as some of the people that lived here. And so you go through that back-and-forth process that takes months to get back and forth with people. Typically, easements don't take that long, but they can.
Thank you.
Commissioner, the only thing I would add, too, a lot of times on our benefit districts, especially for subdivisions, we have a single owner, and they're motivated to get the project moving forward. So a lot of times, those easements and rights-of-way are already dedicated with a plat associated with a subdivision. So this is a retrofit project. This is not our standard type of project, so to speak.
And on the next, the second general agenda item, we're going to talk about easements also with that project. So that's a great segue into that second piece, too.
It's what I do, segues.
So the goals of the project. Project is intended to eliminate a multi-line lateral that crosses several yards. And I think you have some maps in your backup that show that lateral system and how it runs through multiple yards. The multi-line laterals rely on the furthest downstream owner to maintain. So if the furthest downstream owner is a rental and nobody's in it, and that renter or that owner is out of state and the line breaks, they may not necessarily get back to you for days. And we've had that situation where we've had to go and red-tag people in this area and tell them they can't live in their house until we get it fixed. Five of the seven properties are rentals or out-of-town owners. Costs, so the 2015 resolution approved a project with a 50/50 split and a maximum project budget of $170. The $170 include easements, financing, all the project costs, engineering permits, everything. That was all in $170,000. The as-bid construction costs $193,000. So just the construction component alone was above the $170,000. With easements, financing, and incidental costs, the final project cost will now be $278, so substantially above that amount. That includes all the easements, contingencies, financing, engineering. We, Public Works, did that for free. We designed the project, got a permit from KDHE, got all the permits we needed, put it to bid. We did that for free. We did that in-house, trying to keep our costs down. If the city pays for costs over the original $170,000 resolution, total city contribution would be about $192,000, with property owners for $85,000. So that roughly equates to about a 30/70 split now, as we originally were looking at a 50/50. This table kind of lays out, on the right-hand side, the approximate costs that we thought that we were going to have when we went to bid and when we passed the original resolution in 2015. Roughly $12,000 per lot is what we assumed. Comes out to about a $900 a year payment for those seven properties each. If we go to the 50/50 split now with the higher costs, the table on the left is the one that's more adequate. It's about a $19,000, almost $20,000 cost per lot, about a $1,400 per year payment per property for 20 years. So what we need from the Commission tonight is a little bit of direction. One, do we want to authorize and execute a construction contract? And if that answer is yes, then how do we want to split those costs? Do we want to keep with the 50/50 with the new prices? Do we want to go to that 30/70 or that capped amount at $85,000 that was originally in the resolution? Or do we want to do other, some other sort of split or some other sort of option? Those are the direction that Public Works was looking for. I think that there's several members in the audience that have been along for this roller coaster ride for the last seven years. Would love to hear from them if they're in the audience. And with that, I'd look to the Commission for direction or be here to answer questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
If this project were in a new subdivision, and these, we're talking about the failure of this sewer system that was never installed by the city. It was installed privately. But if there, when you, when we do a new sewer installation in a subdivision, about what does, what does it cost per lot for the sewer?
Okay, that's actually a great question. There's about three parts to it. One, in a new subdivision, the benefit district pays 100%. They pay for financing, engineering. They pay a consultant to design that, all of those issues. And then second, sewer's about 50, 60 bucks a foot. So a 100-foot lot would be $60,000.
Okay, just for sewer?
Correct.
So it takes 20 years. Most people combine these special assessments with their mortgage over the course of 20 years, and there's?
It's in that escrow account.
It's in the escrow.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
After the project's completed, then the city takes care of maintenance forever and always.
So we aren't just picking on people here. Good, okay. And this is an outlier. Do you consider that there are other situations like this in the community?
There, it'd be less than a handful. We've identified a few, but there's not a lot. This is certainly an outlier.
Commissioner, I am always surprised when we find historic relic problems like this, whether it's sanitary sewer, water main, or storm sewer. There certainly are probably some outliers out there that we haven't run into yet, but it's on a rare occasion. But there certainly are probably some other examples. If you remember when we did the presentation back in 2012, we advocated for 50/50 to try and bring this, I mean, they're annexed into the city. We need to bring them into compliance with state regulations in terms of how sanitary sewer is collected and make it a public system and not just a spaghetti of four-inch mains in people's backyards that are not in easements and so forth. And we have red-tag homes. We've told people to move our, their homes until those four-inches of, four-inch laterals have been fixed, and we need to correct this. It's been going on for too long.
And there's a point at which this, too, this situation would be red-tagged, or KDHE would come in, and then there's no choice but to do it.
When backups occur, unfortunately, Code Department, the last time Brad and his staff had to go out and red-tag and ask folks to move out, I believe we actually shut off the water to two structures, so that, so that we didn't have raw sewage running across the ground in this particular case.
And that's been within the last 18 months or so. It's maybe a year, 18 months ago. It's been relatively recently.
And we haven't had that specific, something that intense at this site yet?
At this site, yes, we have.
Yes, we have.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of additional questions. So on the split between the lots, it noted that they split it evenly, that lot. I know typically on special assessments, a lot, we do it by square footage. Why was the choice to split it evenly here?
We do it all sorts of ways. We do do by shares or by, you know, each piece. We do do by square foot, and we do do by front foot. So we do it based on all sorts of different methods. In this case, we did it by each, because the breakdown of the lots are about the same size each, and everybody donated about the same size easement. So it was an easy share each.
Okay, that was generally my, okay.
Typically, we'll do a square foot if we think it's going to subdivide again, because it's easier to break that. If you do one share for a lot and that lot subdivides, how do you break that share apart now? now?
And there's not extremely, extreme differences in the home values?
In the lots, yes.
Okay. Second question, I'm assuming no, otherwise you would have presented it to us, but it kind of surprises me that we, there's not state law or even like an internal policy that we have that some addresses situations like this. To me, if we go to a neighborhood to establish a benefit district and we give them the estimated cost, we say it's estimated, so, I mean, people could expect potentially 10,000, $20,000 higher, but 200,000, 200-ish thousand dollars?
It's a big number.
Plus higher is a big number.
Yeah.
So I'm surprised that there, there's truly nothing, like we could just say this benefit district stands and pass it as is. There's nothing in state law that addresses how we handle this?
I think that there is and I'm, Bill would definitely be the person in the room that would know.
Because to me, it kind of seems like an easy way a city could pull a fast one on a neighborhood if they wanted to.
Yeah.
I didn't quite hear your question, Commissioner.
So essentially, when we, when we establish the benefit district, we communicate to the neighborhood what we estimate the price of the improvement's going to be. It's an estimation, so you could assume it's going to be variable, but when it's not even variable, like it's an outstanding, a much, much higher cost than what we had estimated, there's nothing in state law or in internal policies that tells us how we have to address that. The city could just let this stand as is.
You mean let it stand at the, at the estimate that was contained in the original resolution?
No, I mean, essentially, again, even if every single person in that neighborhood said, "We don't want this anymore, that's way too much," the city could still pursue forward with this.
Right. In establishing benefit districts, it gets rather complicated and we're talking about petitions and other things. This benefit district was not established by a petition.
Okay.
The, the neighborhood couldn't come up with a petition. So the alternative way that benefit districts are established is the commission has the authority to establish it itself.
And that's how this?
And that's what happened back in 15. In addition, with certain improvements, sanitary sewer, and you're going to do one later, for storm sewers, those benefit districts can be established by the commission without any notice, without any hearing. The law allows you to do that. We didn't do that back in 15. We published notice and we had a hearing. And tonight, you're amending it and technically we've not published notice. We sent notice by mail to everybody. But yes, the answer to your question, the commission has the authority to establish the district and set the parameters, the estimate, the, the benefit district itself, how it's divided among the benefiting properties and how it's apportioned between the city and the benefit district. So is there some room there for abuse? I suppose so.
Your explanation was sufficient. That makes sense. Thank you for laying it out. Last question. The portion of our fund payment, regardless of how much it is, is that coming out of the sanitary sewer fund?
Waste water fund, correct.
Okay, waste water fund, excuse me. Okay. I'll let the other commissioners ask questions, but I guess my general thought is to lean towards a 30/70 split. It seems reasonable to me that if we went through a law negotiation process with the neighborhood and agreed on 50/50 with 170,000 estimate, that's somewhat of a good faith gesture to say, "It took us three years to close those easements, costs have gone up," that the city would cover?
The arrears.
The portion above it. And I would, it, it surprises me that we don't have some kind of internal policy to address these kind of situations because I would hope that the citizens of the community would know that the city was motivated to, after we established these benefit districts, to issue bids as fast as possible. And I think that's a way that they would know we were motivated. Just a thought. You see what I'm saying?
I do, yeah.
We can really drag our feet on some of these things if we wanted to and it could hurt the end consumer more than it hurt us if we wanted to go that route.
Sure, and we don't have a policy set, set forth on this except for the cost share of benefit district policy. We don't do these. This is pretty unusual.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think in your 15 years, this is the first one. In my 11 years, this is my first one. This is pretty unusual and that's why we really struggled with, you know, how do we get this thing to bid and how do we get it constructed?
Understood.
Again, five of the seven properties are out of state and you're, when you're dealing with out-of-state owners, it takes a while because they aren't as motivated as somebody that lives there that might get a red tag that has to leave.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
I want to make something clear about this 30/70. There's a couple of alternatives in the memo. One is to leave it at 50/50. The resolution that's in your packet does that. If you're inclined to leave things assessed to the benefit districts the way they were in the original resolution, then I would prefer you not talk about a 70/30. That may be about what it ends up, but the way that alternative resolution is worded is the benefit district is going to be assessed the lesser of 50% of the project or a fixed amount, which is 85,000. It's, it's that exact half, that 170.
Yeah, okay.
And the, and the city at large then would pick up the balance. So it isn't a percentage split in that second one.
Understood. Okay. Well, then I'm inclined for the latter of the two.
Yeah, and I, I put the 30/70 just to get a perspective of what that split would be.
Understood, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else just one question on the easements?
Yes.
You know, we spent $26,000 on the easement. Why didn't they just donate it? I mean, that drove up the cost, right?
Absolutely, it did.
And that drug out the time?
I would say that it drug out the time, yes.
Okay, and that's why I'm leaning for the 50/50 split, like the original agreement.
I would like to confirm that it is the city's policy to have the 50/50 split?
On a retro, on a retro. In a new subdivision, it's 100%.
Yeah, but in this, in a situation like this, it's 50/50. And so when you say, when you have to acquire the easement, essentially you're paying for that property, that piece.
We're paying the landowner for the restricted use of that property. They have a restriction now that they can't do certain things on that property that they own. And so that's what that payment is for.
But easements are all over the community.
Absolutely, yeah.
Every, every owner has.
Every, yeah, almost every lot in the city has some sort of easement on it.
So this is, this isn't that unusual. What is unusual is the way it is drug out, but that would be because the owners would not cooperate.
And, and I would, I would preface that by saying, not all the owners were as difficult as others.
Well, I know, but even if one held out and that would account for the three-plus years?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I'm going to wait for a public comment to hear what they have to say, but I think it's always, when somebody purchases a, a property, they think that's the way it's going to be forever. And when we come in and change it, it definitely increases it and some of them may not have that included in their budget because this is going to be a long-term commitment.
Yeah, it's 20 years.
So, and it's, it's a large chunk of money. So I want us to be cautious because also the engineer's opinion of probable cost was way off on this.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know what we do about that.
It was off because we knew that we were capped at 170 and so we didn't, we were concerned about costs. We've been concerned about costs for a year.
Right.
And we've been saying for a year that, you know, we're concerned about construction costs and a lot of bids have been over, over the last year, just because of workload. There's just not enough contractors for the amount of workload we have. In BAF has taken a lot of people, Kansas Department of Ags has taken a lot of people. There is a high demand now for a skilled workforce and we're seeing those costs. We were worried about this one, just like we worry about every bid.
Right. So I think when something is imposed at a later date on a property owner who's thinking they're done or they're set with their mortgage payments and then it's added on and then that's another 20 years, I think it really infringes on their budget. So in this particular case, I have some sympathy towards the property owners.
Sure.
And I'd like to hear more from them. But one of the reasons we pursue these types of initiatives is for safety purposes and to make sure we're keeping up with code.
Absolutely.
And the purpose is not to be somewhat taking over their property, but in the long run, it's in the community's best interest to have a safe community so future people that want to buy those properties are in a safe place.
And it's in their best interest, too, to be hooked to a public sewer main that we go and clean every two years also.
And if we don't do this, it'll be more cost prohibitive.
Absolutely.
As we postpone it.
And it'll be reactionary instead of, you know, pro-actionary where we, we have a system in place instead of, oh, we have a leak, now we got to go red-tag folks.
Right.
You're spot on.
So, yeah, I would like to hear from the community members as well on this one.
All right. Well, now it's time to hear from the public. So if you have a comment on this issue, please come forward. Ask you to state your name and where you live and I think there's a sign-in sheet up there, too, if you fill that out when you get done.
Yeah, I'm Beck Miller and we bought the 1715 Houston, 2013, and we haven't had a lot of trouble. Usually get it, wrote a router now and then, but close to the house, so it wouldn't have nothing to do with you guys.
Did you say 1715?
Yeah.
So he's this one right here.
And nobody contacted us about an easement. We got a big yard back there. I had donated it, you know. They've got an alley, what, the alleyway is vacated, so that shouldn't have cost, you know?
Well, it's vacated, we don't know.
But, anyway, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Don Sweeting. I live at 1714 Pier. You want to come up and point that one out, too?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, yeah. It's been a little while.
Yes, it has.
They own this one right here.
Okay, so, you know, to your point, ma'am, in reference to, you know, adding to the mortgage payment. Paid my mortgage off 10 years ago. So we're not just adding to a mortgage, we're adding a fee altogether, which I'm not saying that the owner, the homeowner shouldn't have some sort of cost, you know, as a benefactor, you know what I mean? But I can tell you that I don't recall, I could be mistaken, but I don't recall receiving anything in the mail. Now, I don't know what your notification processes are, but I don't recall seeing anything in the mail that said, "This is what our estimated cost is per site or overall for the project." We did get paid for easement, but...
And you were, you were good to work with?
Well, I hope so. Every now and again, you know, I mean, I've been called a lot of things, but good to work with is not usually one of them. But, you know, so my concerns are not just, so, you know, to your, to your point, Ms. Morris, you, you said something in reference to, what is it? How do we deal with a new subdivision? This is not a new subdivision. This is a home that I have personally lived in for over 25 years, okay? Paid the mortgage on, had to deal with backups and sewage, okay? On several occasions where it came out of my pocket to fix. Now, I don't know what the, what the internal structure as far as Public Works goes, you know, I'm not here to poke anybody in the chest, but, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, you're, you're asking for a, essentially in the paperwork that I got anyways, it was around 20,000 per site. I guess my question is, is...
Go ahead, keep going. Quit, I'm pulling up your...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, so, I don't know, you know, you've got me off track now, thanks. One of the questions that I would have for the, for the commission is, is there, so right now you're saying that there is a cost of approximately $1,300 per year if we go with the approximately $20,000 cost, 13,000 or $1,300 a year over a 20-year period? Does that have to be paid over a 20-year period? Can it be paid outright or is there a requirement for it to be spanned over the 20 years?
Thanks for your question.
You can?
Okay.
Please do.
Yeah, so in the benefit district, before it goes to permanent bond, you can pay that off. It actually saves you some money if you want to pay that off in advance. So if we go to construction now, in four years, you'll get a letter from our finance department that says your project is going to permanent bond. If you want to come in and pay it off, there's a reduction in those costs because you don't pay a lot of that interest and financing.
And once again, not to poke anybody in the chest.
That's okay.
But had we done this two or three years ago, the cost would have been less.
Possibly, possibly. Thank you.
All right, we'll come back to the commission this time and any other additional questions? If there are no questions, let's kind of state positions then and we'll hit to the answer.
I, I still go with the 50/50 idea simply because, you know, if you build a house here, you're paying 100% and, you know, the rest of the city's picking up the defect, basically, you know, on that. So I think 50% is, you know, is fair.
So we, the answer to number one about executing a construction contract, is that a yes? We want to move forward with the project? Okay.
I think you pretty much have to, based on the way that sewage line is, it's a nightmare.
I would also agree that the construction needs to go forward and I support the 50/50 split, which is the city's policy. Because if we don't do that, then we'll be accused on the next project of playing favorites. And how, I, I don't want to cause, if we have a policy, then I think, and because it is personal, you know, and, and when I moved in 40-some years ago, I had specials and I had to pay them off for 40, um, 20 years. This situation is nobody living, probably, was there when this sewer was put in.
No, no, yeah, 1920s.
And so it is something that has to be fixed for sanitary reasons. All, it looks to me like all of the eight individual situations are even variable. They're not all the same with like two owner-occupieds and the rest are rentals. So how do we, we can't treat them differently, it seems to me, just because it's a rental or because it's a, a single family or because it's on the hill and who pays, who's at the low end of the hill that gets to deal with all the uphill stuff? So fairness, to me, means we just have to stay with our policy.
So I'm going to stick to what I originally said because I think fairness mandates us to keep good faith in the fact that we negotiated a 50/50 split with the community based on 170,000 estimate. While I'll generally agree that we can't play favorites, if a bid comes back on a project more than 100% more than what it was originally expected to be, I think we have an obligation to probably review that split. And for the very reason that this isn't a new benefit district, I know in a new district, the user's going to pay 100%, but the user knows that before they move into the home. They have an agreement that they understand before they move into the home. These users are currently living in the home, so essentially whatever we pass tonight, they're forced to pay. So they don't have much of a choice in, in the saying. So I, I think fairness mandates us to base our assessments on what we originally estimated and do that 50/50 split, and I think the city should take the additional cost.
Yeah, as I said earlier, I'm in favor of us taking the larger portion of this for the factors that Commissioner McKee pointed out, as well as when I bought my house and now we paid off the mortgage, the mortgage was about 1,200 and we paid it off. And if I saw that coming back, that would just crush me right now because you think you're done and then you have something else that you have to look forward, you have to start paying on. So through no fault of theirs, I, and because we have an option, we may not always have an option.
Yeah.
And I think we were provided this option because it was a unique situation. And I don't see this as how, this is how we run business all the time, but that's why we're a local governance and we have options that we can, that would benefit our community and this is one of those options. So I prefer option B.
Okay.
You know, I've got a slight variation, but I don't want to get too complicated, but I, I prefer that we have the homeowner's share on the 85,164. And then if it's possible, again, without being too complicated, is to have each individual homeowner assessed whatever portion of that 26,000 we paid for easements.
Yeah, I'm going to look at you.
Bad hearing, I'm, I'm, say it again, please.
So in other words, the city has already paid $26,000 for easements.
Yes.
I'm not sure, one gentleman said that he gave the easement, so that means that six...
No, Mr. Olson is right here, and we didn't ask for an easement from him. He's right there. Because we didn't need one for his property.
Yeah, and I need to provide some facts too for you, Mayor. There are two property owners who are not in the benefit district that we needed easements from as well.
Right down here.
So, that, that further complicates your add-on statement.
So, with that complicator, I'll just go with the $85,164.
Yeah, it, it makes it extremely complicated if you try to incorporate that, primarily because, as Rob pointed out, we needed to get a line across property that doesn't need the line.
Right.
Sir, if you'll look right in the middle there, that big yard right there?
Is it this one?
Uh, next over.
This one?
Yeah. And it runs all across, see that line coming down there?
Yeah.
I'd gave you that easement right there, all the way across there.
Sure, yeah, you're going to connect right here.
Yeah.
So you don't need that easement.
Couldn't you move it farther, couldn't you get up there and move it, where you wouldn't have to buy no easements?
Well, either way, we've got to get...
Oh, you'd have to buy the other one.
Yeah, either way, I got to get an easement to get from there to there.
I see.
Yeah.
So, we have two who have expressed 50/50, and three who have expressed the option B, which is the division of the $85,164. So, I would ask first that we get the motion from option B, and if that doesn't pass, then we'll come back to option A.
And I think you can just read the motion, and just use the, the resolution numbers are the same, this would just be the B alternate.
Yeah.
That's correct, Cleveland. I move, we approve resolution number 061819-B, amending resolution 010516-A. Am I on track still?
Yeah.
Modifying the parameters of the benefit district to address the increase in cost, but leaving all the other benefit district parameters the same, except the engineer's opinion of probable cost in the amount of $181,384 for the base bid. And pursuant to Charter Ordinance Number 44, whoops, and based upon the Director of Public Works' explanation of the difference between the engineer's opinion of probable cost and the bid, award the, award and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute construction contract with Larson Construction of Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount of $223,361.
Commissioner, I think that resolution is option A.
Oh.
Because it leaves all the other parameters the same. That would leave it at 50/50.
Okay. What do I change?
What you need is the second...
This one?
The, the number two alternative. Maybe it's not in the, not in the motion.
We, I think it's...
If you look in the alternatives...
That's the one I read though.
This one says, "Resolution to, to, Resolution B, which is a change to A." Is that the one you're looking at, the single, the double, two, two-page document?
They're both B.
B is tonight's resolution, A was the resolution that was passed in...
So I approve, I, I move to approve tonight's resolution of B.
B alternate.
If you look under the alternatives in the memo...
I think, isn't that what you just handed me?
I, I did.
That's A.
Bill, they're the same numbers.
They're the same numbers.
But so we could just designate the one that caps it as the alternate.
The way the motion is worded in the memo, envisions adopting the 50/50 split...
Right.
Because the motion says, "Change the cost, but leave everything else the same."
Okay.
We didn't write out a motion for alternative number two, but if you go to the alternatives, alternative number two is the wording of that motion.
Okay.
I don't have an alternative number two. Oh, this one, okay, I was looking at possible, I looked at possible motion instead of the alternatives. Okay, let's try this again. I move, we approve resolution number 01, I'm sorry, 061819-B, amending resolution number 010516-A, modifying the parameters of the benefit district to address the increase in cost, and also modifying the remaining parameters of the benefit district as the commission determines, except the engineer's opinion of probable cost in the amount of $181,384 for the base bid. And pursuant to Charter Ordinance Number 44, and based upon the Director of Public Works' explanation of the difference between the EOPC and the bid, award and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a construction contract with Larson Construction of Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount of $223,361.
And, and just so we're clear, where it says, "Modifying the remaining parameters as the commission determines," what you've determined is the, the apportionment of cost is going to be limited to $85,000 to the benefit district, and the balance to the city at large.
Correct. So that was the right motion?
Right, okay.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
No.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Motion carries, three to two. Hopefully you have that correctly recorded.
Yeah.
We'll now move to item B, which is to consider resolution number 061819-C, establishing a benefit district for the Smith Street Drainage Project, who's under, again, Brian Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer, again. This is a project that we've been working on with the neighborhood, again, for about two years, maybe even longer, maybe three now. We've had four different neighborhood meetings. The goal of the project, as we'll talk about later, is to stabilize a drainage area that goes between Tuttle Creek Boulevard and Smith Street, eventually goes down to Prairie Lakes, and then into the Marlot Ditch. Been talking with the neighborhood for about three years now. We've got a petition that was submitted back in February, March. It's got 52% support based on lineal foot, however, based on area, which is how we have to accept the petition per state law, and Bill can certainly talk more about that than I can. We've got 48%, so we're just shy of 50. Because we're so close, we wanted to come to the commission, get your input, whether or not we want to move forward with this, or whether or not we want to deny it. So, agenda, background, timeline, project goals, again, costs, and then direction from the commission. Multiple meetings have been held with the neighborhood to discuss erosion and drainage along the Smith Street Channel. We've developed two different projects, one's a longer project that goes all the way from Tuttle Creek Boulevard down to Smith, and then, another one's a shorter project, which has about eight properties in it. And it really addresses the, the lion's share of where all the erosion is. During the spring of this year, a petition was passed between the owners that had 52% support, based on the lineal frontage assessment method, again, back to those multiple ways to assess things that Commissioner McKee was talking about, based on the short project. The long project had little support, so we dropped that one pretty quickly. Statute requires that the area of the petition to be more than 50%, of which we have 48. As we have close to 50% of the property supporting the project, we need an input from the commission, and we need some direction from you. As designed, we do not have easements. So again, back to the easement question, if the commission wished to move forward, we'd have to go into the easement acquisition process, which again, if somebody was voting no on the petition, could be rather difficult to get an easement from them. We may have to come back and talk to you about condemnation at some point in the future. Project goals, reduce erosion along the ditch and establish a manageable drainage system, and reduce maintenance of the channel. We relocate some existing utilities that are in there, and four of eight properties have agreed to the short project, and we have a map to show those properties. Petition estimate is $130,000, of which 50% would be paid through the stormwater fund, per our adopted cost share policy, again, back to that adopted policy. If approved, costs for the eight lots would be about $65,000, and we've had, we budgeted $7,500 for easement acquisition, which is built into the project budget. If easement negotiations are not productive, we may return to the commission for a condemnation discussion. Should condemnation become necessary, we'll probably have to revise that cost estimate, because condemnation is a very expensive process. Roughly speaking, here's your table of what each project or property would pay, based on their frontage, or on their foot-frontage to that existing stream. You can see they vary anywhere from about $4,300 to about $12,000. On the right-hand side of the column is their approximate yearly payment. So, for the commission, we, we, we need to know if we want to establish that shorter benefit district with a 50/50 cost split. Is there another method of assessment that you would prefer? Or if there's other options for costs that you'd like to discuss, that's what we're here for tonight. And with that, I'll stand for questions from the commission.
Brian, some of this is in the packet, but some of the public made out of, read it thoroughly, so...
Okay.
You just describe a couple of things.
Sure.
One, why this project might be necessary, in other words, we have maintenance issues that we have to provide for, and what kind of water this carries, and then, the impact of doing the shorter on the piece that will not be completed under this proposal.
Sure. So we have a significant erosion issue over in this area. We have some utilities that are exposed, Kansas Gas has a gas main that's exposed. And then we've got some pretty significant erosion around 2505 Brockman, Mr. Farley. He was kind of the gentleman that brought it to us, and the one that really has kind of spearheaded it, and got the neighborhood together to have those discussions. This watershed actually goes all the way up to the Manhattan Kimball area. This actually carries water all the way from Garden of the Flint Hills, down through Meadowbrook, underneath Tuttle Creek Boulevard, and then down between these two homes. On the downstream side of this, there's a paved channel, it's actually a concrete-lined channel. When that was lined, and who paid for it, we couldn't find it in our records. Our assumption is it was done with the benefit district back in the 50s or 60s, when those homes were built, but we can't find records on it, we're not positive. This area, we're going to do a little bit more greenery, and we're going to do a little bit less concrete in this area. Two reasons, one, because we're afraid we're going to have to go to the court and get a permit, if we put a bunch of concrete into a channel. We, we're pretty confident the court's going to want us to pay them. And two, trying to go with something that's a little bit more natural, and it looks, looks a little bit better between the backyards and the side yards of all the homes. Roughly speaking, I believe this folks, these folks, and then these two voted yes, there was your four yeses, and then there was a no, a no, a no, and no. So there was a four, there was a four to four. That's why we're here before you tonight. So those costs that you saw were based on lineal foot, or frontage up to the ditch. If you go by that lineal foot method, we've got 52% support. If you count shares, then it's a 50/50. We got four yeses and four nos. And that's why those costs vary so much, because we based it on lineal foot. So obviously, this property here, they're going to pick up a huge portion of that bill. That's why we had the question about, we want to assess it a different way.
So, questions?
So that property that's going to pick up a bigger portion of that bill, remind, was that they, were they a yes or no?
They were a no.
And why, again, did we use the linear foot method on this one versus just the last discussion we had?
So, the lineal foot method on drainage is a lot more, is used a lot more, as opposed to sanitary sewer, which is usually, you know, by the foot. This is easily measured by, by that ditch also. It was a method that we came up with, we can certainly look at it a different way, we could do equal shares and do four and four, we could do, you know, weighted shares, there's all sorts of different ways that we can do it. We did it by lineal foot, because that's typically what you do on a drainage method.
Okay.
Here I am again. The commission has to find whatever the method of assessment is, is assessing benefiting properties per the benefit they receive. And generally speaking, when we're talking about a sewer project, the benefit is, if it's a lot with a residence on it, if one's bigger than the other, unless it's capable of subdividing, the benefit's the same. It's one sewer line to one residential unit. This benefit, presumably, there's more benefit, because there's more channel that's associated with a lot, so the improvement in the, addressing the erosion next to that property, the benefit may be larger than if the channel is small. That's the logic behind the difference in those methods.
Probably the other reason why the area method isn't used in this, as Brian described, there's stormwater that's coming from other areas that are outside of these properties. So, I think Brian and his staff recommended not using the area method, because it's, it's not just the contribution of the rain that falls on these lots that goes to the channel, there's water that's coming from outside. So that's, that's probably the real, the reason why we chose the linear method, just trying to help into some of the thought process that went into why that one versus others.
So I have a couple of que, well, mainly one question pertaining to the same thing. There's two Lot 17s.
Oh, did I mistype? Okay.
So, even in the chart, it has two Lot 17s, and the property, there's two Lot 17s, one that said yes, and one that said no.
Sure.
And, so I was wondering, is it the same owner, or is it, so Brockman and the, the first one?
Sure.
Are both Lot 17?
So Lot 17 here is in a different subdivision than Lot 17 here.
Okay.
So...
So they're very close to each, not, I mean, you know, relatively close to each other.
Yeah, they're in different subdivisions, but they're the same Lot 17, correct.
All right. And one said yes, and one said no.
Correct.
So I was just wondering about the designation for each of those. But yeah, other than that, here was public comment I have to say.
Let's move to public comment, although, then anyone having a comment on this item, please come forward. Thank you. Just your name and address, please.
My name's Lawrence Farley. I live at 2505 Brockman, Lot 17. Yeah, I started this petition and everything. When I first bought this property in 1993, the easement there, the drainage ditch, was really small. And when they started doing all the construction up on Kimball, and K-State, and Meadowlark, the water flow just getting worse and worse and worse. And, right now, it's about 10 to 15 feet deep level. And when the water rains really hard, like today when it rained, it filled halfway full. I've seen it rain so hard, where it would hit the bridge on Brockman, and go over top into the street. I've lost 24 feet of privacy fence, I've lost over 15 feet of land. It's already eroding my backyard. There's a canal underneath my yard right now, where the water is going through there and hitting that canal, and I'm just afraid about, it, it just collapsing my whole backyard. Two houses down from me, across from the, the drainage ditch, there's a 15-foot-long exposed gas line. I've talked with civil engineers, and they have also talked with Kansas Gas. Kansas Gas has not yet to do anything about it. That gas line that's exposed right there, is only about four inches away from the neighbor's gas meter itself. So, I mean, there, it's, it's about ready to go. Today's rainfall, I probably lost about another six inches of land. Every time it rains hard, I lose more and more property. When my kids were small, they used to be able to jump back and forth across that, that's how small it was. Now, you'd have to build a bridge to get across from one side to the other. I can't let my grandkids outside in the backyard to play, because it's just way too dangerous, because I've lost so much of my privacy fence. It's just, I've been working on this for a long time. As Brian said, on the other side of the street, where the concrete culvert thing is there, that was put in in the 90s. My neighbor next door, his name was Mr. Wilkerson, he talked to me about that, and he didn't tell me how it was paid for or anything, but I know, they, they fought for a while to get that put in as well, because their property was eroding, because when it comes through my property, it hits a bend, and it curves to the left, so it was eroding his property as well, but they got it fixed. We thought our property was going to be fixed at the same time, when they started doing that one, but it never happened. So, you can see, I've been working with this since the 90s, trying to get this fixed. And it's just getting worse and worse and worse, the more it rains, the more property I lose. I'm, I've lost so much in my backyard now, it's just honestly getting a little ridiculous, it's, it's getting really, really bad, but we can't even let our grandkids go outside and play, because it's just too dangerous. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. You see no one, we'll come back to the commission.
I actually.
Questions, comments?
I did have one more question that I forgot about. So when was this estimate initially made? Like, we're not going to have another scenario where it comes back $200,000 more because it took three or four years?
And it certainly could. We may go to condemnation with four properties that don't want to give us easements and we could be back here in three years having this exact same conversation.
If that's the scenario, that's different than just because it's three or four years later and contractors are busy, the bid is higher. So I understand that, but I, so when was the original estimate?
Desmond, it's been within the last six to eight weeks.
Okay.
It was at the last neighborhood meeting we had in March. I think it was in March. We don't do a lot of green infrastructure, but we did hire a consultant to come in and look at it that does a lot of them. And that's kind of where we got the idea with the, you know, the green infrastructure and go with the less concrete solution.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I.
When, let's say we're putting in riprap or something like that in lieu of concrete, then from this gentleman who lives on Brockman, when, when he started off with a yard with a, let's say a two-foot trench going through there to carry the water, and now it's X feet, is this still incumbent on the property owner? Once you get that riprap in, I don't, is the design width four feet, six feet? Kind of how, what do we think about?
So what we've looked at is a trapezoidal cross-section with the bank being some sort of GeoGrid that holds that bank together. We're trying to pull that cross-section back in and get it inside the channel and then get a trapezoidal cross-section in. As you know, the wider that channel is, the more those slopes will lead back, the lower your velocity is. Lower velocity is less erosion. This stream is doing exactly what streams do. They meander, and that's what this one's doing. It's meandering around. You know, the goal of the project is to get something that we can go in and maintain because after we establish a benefit district, this is our maintenance. We're going to be the ones up there taking care of it.
So the homeowner then would likely have to restore his yard to kind of what it was before. He'd have to do some fill up to your riprap.
We take care of that with the project if we could get an easement from him. We'd cut that cross-section back to what the original channel width was. This channel carries quite a bit of water. There's a pretty good flow. And his comment about water going over that box at Brockman, I absolutely believe it.
I'll make a motion. I move we approve the resolution number 061819C, finding the project advisable and authorizing construction for this Smith Channel Stormwater Improvement Project.
I'll second. Call the rule, please.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Now move to item C, which is to consider an agreement with USD 383 to share in the cost of realigning the middle school recreation centers. And Eddie Estes will present.
Yes, and bear with me a minute while I close Brian's documents.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Eddie Estes, Director of Parks and Recreation and representing Middle School Recreation Centers tonight in the discussion. As you see, is a realignment request from the school district. Tonight, we want to talk about, you have a draft agreement in your packet between the school district and the city to realign the recreation centers. And that agreement is a, a split cost, 50% for the city, 50% for the school district, up to $500,000 total cost, $250,000 maximum from the, from the school district. The question's to you tonight also, do we want to increase the existing budget for those facilities? Or do we want to decrease the project scope? As I said, the school district prefers the recreation centers realigned, which will better accommodate their storm shelters, of which they would like to utilize a space between the recreation centers and the school district for that. And I'll show you a concept of that. At this point, it looks like that would cost approximately $500,000 in additional site work, $500,000 total for the two facilities combined. As I said, the draft agreement in your packet is an agreement between the school district and the city to split up to about $500,000 cost and up to a maximum of $250,000 from the school district. Just to remind you, the original Anthony site plan, you've seen this from presentations from our design build team and Calhoun Gordon, again, Browning Avenue. This is the Anthony site. Of course, this facility is orientated to the east. Parking lot, again, these are concepts. We're not at a full design with any of these, so they're just conceptual drawings. So the revised, again, is just conceptual because just looking at the possibility of where that movement would occur, this is the, this is the original, what you'd seen in the one I just showed you before. Again, Browning Avenue, recreation center orientated to the east. This was the conceptual school addition when this concept was developed. This is the existing school. The revised orientates the recreation center, so it's pointed more to the southeast. Again, this is Browning Avenue right here. And the school district is proposing storm shelter in this location, which orientates better with the school district, but it causes a realignment of the recreation center. That's the Anthony site. The Eisenhower site, again, the concept that you'd seen previously. Of course, Marlet up on the top, Walters, future Kirkwood. Recreation centers orientated more to the west. You can see, again, the concept of the, of the parking. So what they're looking at, again, this is the original. This would be Marlet up on the top. The concept for the rec center has it orientated somewhat pointing to the west. Existing school, school concept. Again, the school, you know, was behind the recreation centers in regards to its design. So that's, again, as they're looking at this revised, would move the recreation center so that it's pointed more to the southwest. And this is Marlet up on top. And their proposed school addition would be in between, of course, the existing and the recreation center. As you could see, they were looking at and needing more space than what was available to them in that original alignment. And so they're not substantial changes. Again, we're still in a concept mode, 30% or so with the recreation centers, but it does create quite a bit of expense to realign those facilities. So tonight, what we're looking for from you, authorization to finalize that realignment agreement. And that realignment agreement, again, would create an agreement between the city and the school district where the school district would be paying half of what the cost of that realignment would be. Again, it's in, we think that that cost could be up to $500,000, meaning the school district would be willing to pay up to $250,000 if it was a $500,000 realignment cost. So looking for authorization to finalize that agreement. And the important part, really looking for some direction, do we want to increase the overall project budget? If you recall, sales tax, .25, we've always envisioned each one of the middle schools would be eight and a half million, $17 million total. Seco Park, future improvements would be eight and a half million dollars. And then Trails would be $2 million over that 10-year. That .25, we always envisioned that it would generate 2.75 million a year. Over 10 years, 27 and a half million dollars, which would, as I said, each middle school eight and a half million, Seco eight and a half million, Trails 2 million. Our first 12 months of sales tax collection, it's performed real well and it's actually has collected, I believe, 3.1 million burning. So we've collected in the first 12 months enough excess revenue to be able to accommodate the additional expense of this realignment. That's in the first 12 months. So again, it's performed well. Or would the commission prefer that we maintain the current $17 million budget towards two facilities? And city administration, our design team, McCall and Gordon, and our steering committee reconvene, reevaluate the projects and see if there's a way that we could find some savings. I'm not real keen on eliminating amenities. Our steering committee worked for a long time with our design build team, developed a list of prioritization. They worked a long time to develop what those amenities, referred amenities were. So I'm not, I'm not real excited about that aspect. And I think that we would need to get that steering committee back involved if that was the direction the commission would like to go. McCall and Gordon is here tonight. Eric Reed, Assistant Superintendent of the School District is here, other USD personnel, and they certainly can answer the more technical questions if you might have those. But that's what we're discussing tonight. Are you agreeable to authorize that agreement between the school district and the city? And I think that we need to do that because even if you want to keep the budget at 17 million, we're still going to have realignment costs. And I do think that we want to enter into an agreement with the school district where they would be paying partial cost for that realignment. And please provide some direction if you would be agreeable to increase that budget or if you want to keep that budget where it's at.
Okay, this time I'll go first. So like you said, we had ours already set up before the bond issue came along. And the bond issue, I think, was for $120 million?
$120.
120, 100, close to 130, but 129 million dollar bond issue. So we were already set. So it looks as though the school district is doing us a favor by splitting the cost. But I'm of the opinion that our money was already dedicated towards the project that we had proposed to the community. And we are doing the realignment because of the bond issue that was passed, and we're having to make those changes because of it. So if we're having to make those changes because of the bond issue, I feel that it is the responsibility of the school district to pick up the entire tab because our sales tax is going to the project that we promised the community and that the steering committee worked on and everybody else worked on. The realignment is coming forward because of the bond issue, which is driven by property taxes and which is 130, close to 130 million dollars. So I feel, I don't want to decrease the project that we already have in place. I think you're right. I think the steering committee worked really hard on it. And for us to go back and try to redo that, I think would be very time-consuming and maybe not what the community wanted because we're going with what the community had suggested at the time. So right now, I'm not in favor of splitting the cost. Even though we came in above expectations for collecting sales tax, I don't think we're obligated to spend it on this. I think anytime we look at like the sales tax that was passed for the pools, we ended up using it for other initiatives that had to do with the pools. And that might be the same with this, once we get it up and going. So I don't want to think of it as now we have more money than we thought, we should spend it on this therefore. But I am, I want us to rethink on how to do this a little differently as far as the 250. So right now, I'm not for this proposal that's in front of me, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
I have a question, well, a couple of questions. First one is about the projections of the sales tax. As a 27-year-old, I haven't seen through many 10-year, 20-year tax initiatives. So is performance after a year or two something that we can viably project 10 years out? Like, it's good year one, but does that, does that actually change the estimates that we originally made?
Probably, probably not, Commissioner. Actually, the, it started last June, and so we're not really comparing an annual basis like we would our one cent sales tax. On the other side of the coin, when we did that estimate, we really left out, I think, the use tax. And the use tax is generating about 300,000 a year. So that's why the numbers are really coming in much greater than the 2.75 that Eddie mentioned a minute ago. So I think we were being very conservative back then. And indeed, at least the first year, it has really exceeded that expectation. Now, will it in the future? Well, if you say that that use tax really wasn't figured in to the sales tax itself, possibly. But you're right, a year isn't, isn't an indicator of where we're going to go in the future, certainly.
Well, I was, I guess I wasn't really necessarily trying to prove a point that, like, the point that you brought up is maybe we forgot something or we didn't take something into account. So I was just curious, in your professional opinion, does it actually change the 10-year outcome? Because I would assume that that estimate also accounts for some low years as well.
Well, it could. I tend to be a little bit more bullish, but after our last budget meeting, I think you're a little bit more cautious, and I can appreciate that. But I think we're going to do well.
Thank you. Second question, when you talked to, I'm assuming, or talking partners at the school district, was there any discussion about, did you have a discussion that the commission might come back and say, we think that you should take on this whole cost? Did they have a response on what the implications of that were? Or do we have any partners from the school district here? I guess I, before I just, before I just say, school district should be, pay for this money, I would want to understand the implications on their end as well.
Yes, and I'm happy to address some of it and a little bit what you said, Commissioner Ready, as well. Because the bond issue was about a year behind, the sales tax was passed November, about a year ahead of the school. Obviously, the city project got started very, very before us. And I don't think that was anything unusual. And if you guys remember the concept designs you guys pushed forward as the city, it was very different than what we've even showed you tonight. If you remember, both gyms were on the other side of the building. There wasn't as much dirt work. It wasn't as up and down. Those were concept designs and they were put together. When the design process started, people came, people talked, people shared, people said this is what we want. And I think we've got a better solution. I think we got a great solution because the process works really well. And that's how the process works on the gym, that we shifted those locations to the other side. All, while that process is going on, USD is trying to catch up because we knew when we passed that bond issue, we needed to find the location for our building. Not just any location, but we have to have the right location for that building. It has to serve the needs of what we want to do. Now, what the school district could have very well done in this agreement, because we did not determine exactly where those gyms were going to lay, we trusted the process and we knew there was going to be adjustments and needed to be give and take between partners all along the way. So when those questions came, is it possible to move that? Is it able, are we able to do those things? We wanted to do those things. And I think our process between the school and the city so far have been the model of partnership. That wasn't our intention, but we have to get our building in and we have to take care of our side of the business as well. And what I was starting to say is what I could have done at the very beginning of the process and say, city, you're on hold. And you have to wait until I know exactly what I'm doing, but in good faith, trusting people with the process that we can problem solve along the way, we continue to allow those designs to push forward so we can meet the timelines the community wants. And we said we could reach the community on both projects. So we've been trying to play that catch-up, and we played that catch-up game. And the space we need, what we found out, if you, if I can go back to that design, Eddie?
Yeah.
That's possible?
One more if you want.
That, that one's fine because if you look at either side, so you'll see the light or the medium light blue for the proposed school addition. So that, that's the additional wing we have to accommodate the growth that we see with sixth grade coming over. And what you'll see is on the little crux of where the existing school is, and that's our storm shelter. That's our, going to be our probably fine arts area. It's going to be band room, orchestra room, splitting that into two. Why it was really important to put it there is because that gives me two accesses in the storm shelter. I don't know if you've ever tried to move 750 pre-teen teenage kids. The way we had our concept designed that the school had that wasn't going to be acceptable. The way we had our concept designed that the school had that wasn't going to be acceptable was a one-entry. We had a one-way entry into that storm shelter. If you ever lined seven-hundred kids up through two doors going through, sometimes you don't have enough time. So, for us, it was very important to get that. In order to have that meet the requirements for storm shelters, it had to be bigger. It had to be bigger than what we showed on the concept designs. I'm sorry about that, I don't like that, but also, I, I tried to keep the process going, I tried to keep it moving so everybody could hit the timelines, and we always talked. Every time we had a meeting, I said, you've got to make sure I've got some flexibility to do what we need to do when we put the school addition in. Another thing we're, we're hoping to do, that I think we're more than able, and I included it in my letter, I would love to make that storm shelter applicable for your site as well, on weekends and evenings for events. It, it's going to be large, it's going to be able to be used. I don't see any reason why that door stays locked if there's a tornado event on the weekend and something's going on in one of those gyms. I want city personnel to have access to be able to slide that car, to be able to enter the gym and use that storm shelter when they need it. I think that being there makes it a lot more realistic, and so I do think it also adds value to the city project as well. So, I'm sorry for the shift, I apologize for that, but I also don't apologize in certain ways because what I really could have done, if I was only looking out for the school interest in this, I would have stopped you and you wouldn't even have what you have right now. We wouldn't be where we are right now. We're where we are because we trust each other and we're good partners. I understand this is going to bring a cost to you, which is why, yeah, I believe the district's able to, because we're making that push, and there is definitely value to the school district with the gym project. There, there is great value to the gym, that's why we've been working on this in partnership. So, I, I know it's causing a shift, that's going to take two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars out of school projects? That's okay. What I don't want this to turn into is, this is yours, this is ours, and me fighting for you and you fighting for your part, it's not going to be a good partnership for a very long time if we're fighting over those things. But if we move forward together, which is the way we've been discussing as far as the group has gone, so.
No, I'm, I'm all for the partnership. I have nothing, I'm not saying anything against the realignment or anything. It's when we talk about the shift and the increase in our budget, that's where I'm stuck on.
I understand.
I understand all of the reasons you gave, and I do think we work well collaboratively. I just feel you probably have, because you're already in those beginning stages and because a hundred twenty-nine million dollars is vastly more than seventeen million, I feel like you have a bigger cushion to handle the shift in the way we're thinking. So, in this particular proposal, I am not for approving a budget increase on, on the seventeen million. Because I'm pretty sure, as we move forward, there's going to be other budget increases. That's typically the way most projects go, they don't stick to it. So, in the next few years, as we transition and go through these movements, we rarely stick to the price we've committed to. And when I have an option to, I have an option to think differently about the cost and increasing which, which direction are we going to go, this is one that I feel like you may have a little bit more of a budget that you can work with than we do. So, that, I'm not against any of the project.
And I disagree. I absolutely disagree. I have a lot of responsibility and things we've told the general public with that hundred-and-twenty-nine-point-five million dollars that I need to accomplish.
Um, I have one more question for Eddie. Thank you, Eric, I appreciate your assessment, that helps. It, I'm assuming, I kind of cleaned this from the packet, but I want to make sure. So, this has not, if we did decide to start the approach of looking at cutting the budget first, the steering committee hasn't been made aware of that at all to this point?
That's correct, they have not.
Okay. So, I guess my general synopsis is, I think it's, I think the asset split is reasonable, but it's hard for me to make a decision between trusting that the projections will continue to be higher than what we originally estimated versus the cuts when I don't know what the steering committee would propose as a cut. So, in, in my eyes for, I think that we should do the split, but I, I don't know which route to go mostly because I don't, I don't understand what we would be cutting from the budget with a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. So, I know that doesn't fully answer your question, but I, I, I also don't want to sit here and say, increase the budget five-hundred thousand dollars, because I don't know what, if there's low hanging fruit, and not to say that anything in those buildings isn't important, but again, I would want to understand what those cuts would be first.
Well, I, I might, just in response to that a little bit, and I'll, I'll look to McCowen Gordon a little bit as well. That five-hundred thousand is extreme maximum. You know, they continue to, to look at the site plans for both of the facilities, and even tonight, feel like they're able to continually reduce that. They have not put those plans out, I'll say, out on the street for contractors pricing. It's their estimates internally, and again, five-hundred thousand is extreme maximum. Again, Tucker, even tonight, as we were talking in the hallway, they really felt like they couldn't get that information to me before tonight, but they felt like they've been able to decrease even as recent as today, so.
So, Tucker, Petticord with McCowen Gordon. We are, because of the delivery method being different with the rec centers project and the middle schools project, being, being that we're a design builder for the city and a construction manager for the schools, and that the, we, we are actually at the same stage of design with both facilities, we're nearing the completion of schematic design on the middle schools. So, the costs are still at a very early stage, even though we've been engaged on the rec centers for a long time. When this proposed change came, came about and we were trying to determine what the cost impact was, it was at a quick, high-level understanding of how much dirt it's going to take to swing these buildings out over, basically, the big ditch that's up at Anthony. We have been, that, that all of the cost impact is not on the actual school budgeted facility, it's associated with the dirt work and the retaining walls for the rec centers. That's why it's in that budget. So, as part of, as your design-build partner, we have been since that date spending our time trying to reduce those costs prior to putting those out to bid, actually tomorrow. So, those drawings were being finished today to reduce those costs.
So, that was my question, when do you think you would have finalized cost?
So, we have it, the plan is to put it out to bid for two to three weeks, I think. I'm, I'm not sure that we've set the actual bid date, but we were receiving all those from our consultants today. We are supposed to have our estimate on the schematic design for the middle schools done by the twenty-sixth board meeting for the Board of Education, and our goal is to have as much of those earthwork-associated costs which are what's driving this back earlier than maybe even the bid date associated with the rec center so that we can have a total site picture on this. Right now, our estimate is that this is, could be down as low as three-hundred thousand total impact, but that's still, we still haven't gotten a finalized grading plan, and I still haven't gotten a look at the whole thing.
Thank you for that explanation. So, last question, Eddie, on that. So, a vote yes on this resolution tonight is essentially the commission just authorizing that split, and then you will come back with a final cost, say, our impact's a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and then we can then decide whether we want to hope projections come in higher and tack total budget, or if we want to cut, correct? So, this isn't the last time we'll discuss this, if we vote yes on this tonight.
What, what you'll be seeing in a future time from McCowen Gordon, they have to deliver a GMP to us, and city administration needs to evaluate that GMP and to make a recommendation to the city commission. They obviously, they are not going to give us a GMP over what we've already determined as a project budget. It helps them a bit if they have some flexibility to be able to go over that seventeen billion in development of that GMP. We have to evaluate that, we have to make a recommendation to the city commission too on that GMP. I believe that's the approach. And so, again, what Tucker is saying to you also, a maximum of five-hundred thousand dollars, they think they can continue to reduce that. We're going to get another opportunity to evaluate that GMP, once they get that delivered to us. Yes, that agreement is that.
I don't know who did this agenda with the Frost stuff. The, the agreement you have in front of you envisions an increase in the cost between the city and McCowen Gordon. If that increase doesn't materialize, that agreement then is, needs to be modified. In other words, if you're going to reduce your budget in some way to address this increase and still expect the school district to share in something, I'm not sure how we define it, but whatever McCowen Gordon tells us is an increase over what it would have been, even though it's not a total increase in the cost, the agreement would have to be modified to address that. Right now, it is only, that agreement is only usable if you are willing to tell McCowen Gordon, go ahead, do what's necessary to modify your plans to address this change, and then tell us how much it's going to cost. And that agreement then shares that cost between the city and the school district. It does not envision you reducing part of that contract to address some of the cost. Is that, is that?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I'll, I'm, I'll let the other commissioners ask questions and maybe I'll clean more information, but I guess tonight I don't understand how, I agree that we should do the split, but I don't necessarily know if it, we should just tack it on to the budget or make cuts, so I actually don't really understand how I'm supposed to vote yes or no on this item tonight. Because I don't want to vote yes and that be implicit approval that the, the cost of these projects go up. That's the direction that I'm leaning, but I don't want this to be a problem for a commission two or three years from now because it was an easy answer for me at the time, so.
I, I suppose it's possible, and I, I haven't been involved with McCowen Gordon on what they're doing, but I suppose it's possible to delay the execution of this agreement until they come back and tell you in a final form what needs to be changed and how.
I think that would, I think that would help a lot.
But, but you know, this wording says approximate, what if we just said a maximum of five-hundred thousand dollars? That means it can't go over that, but it can go under.
That's the reason for that wording, Commissioner, but it doesn't envision you addressing some of that increase by, by changing what you're asking McCowen Gordon to do.
Right. Well, I agree with that.
Mr. Frost, I have a question. And it has to do with the original sales tax referendum that was passed and for the, the city, this quarter cent. Can we spend more? Can we spend two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more as we're talking this evening of that sales tax money? I know that it's overproducing for this first year, and I assume that the, the estimates were conservative. On the other hand, at the tail end of this whole process, if the sales tax generates more every year and there's some left at the end, what is our obligation to do with that?
I think the law allows you to spend it on any lawful purpose you can spend it for, as I recall. I mean, you, you're not limited, if, if it generates more and you don't terminate it, that excess can be used for.
I think on the last one with the pools and the zoo, we felt like we were doing the right thing that was connecting with what the public wanted by directing the remainder to the zoo and the programs there. This one is a little bit different, and I just want, I just wanted, I appreciate your opinion, thank you.
The schematic of the, the picture and the schematic are not quite the same. So, if you go to the Anthony picture, the artist's rendering, there, no.
That's the Anthony.
So, my question has to do with the orientation of the gymnasium, reference to the football field or the track. So, when you turn that thing, let's say, forty-five degrees to the right, and you're worried about the ditch, then does that encroach on that track? It's hard to tell from this, from the artist.
Very close, but it doesn't. It's very close, but it doesn't.
So, the area around that track is not compromised? In other words, the things that it would be used for?
Part, part of the continued development that we've had since our first analysis is to add a retaining wall around the, what would be southwest corner of rec center, to be able to pull it back from. It, it changes the foundation system for the building and amount of dirt work that we have to do, you're paying more here to save more over there.
And the other thing while you're up there, my assumption is if you try to carve two-hundred-and-fifty or five-hundred thousand dollars out of the, out of the cost of the recreation center, we're going to have design costs for that, correct?
Um, we've already incurred some additional, I believe our contract allows for some, there's a contingency associated with design changes, and we have had additional costs provided to us by our civil engineer for doing additional grading plans associated with this. But, in discussions with the team to spend a small amount in order to try to save hundreds of thousands of dollars has been something we've moved forward with, and it's part of the overall budget.
And the, I guess the other thing is we've got, this kind of has to do with which pocket are you going to pay with? Because we're all taxpayers, so the point-two-five yields what it yields. If it underproduces, then we don't get to expend everything we thought we were going to. If it overproduces, we get to spend on something else that might come down along, along the way. But we also contribute property tax, and I think, Eric, the mill, at least the beginning, is seven-point-eight increase just for this school. So, we're all going to be, we're all going to be participating in that. So, if it comes out of the school side, it comes out of the, the sales tax side, it, it's kind of ox-nicks. So, I, I do appreciate Eric, the, the school participating in this, and I think, again, the partnership has been really solid regardless of the, kind of the juxtaposition of the timings, which has made it somewhat more challenging, so.
If I could speak to that for a second too, you know, I, I believe in, I know Bill's still here, he didn't leave, did he? You know, we never did determine that site because we knew it would come later. There's no legal obligation for the school to have to do anything for this, is my understanding, because we don't, we don't have that. We can put it all on that project if we wanted to do it that way. And I've got to go forward, if you guys pass this tonight and go forward with it, I've got to go talk to my board about why we're going to shift money to the city project, because the city project benefits the school. This is about the partnership, not about who does what. Because I, I don't want to get into the technicalities of it, but like, like I said, I don't believe there's any legal responsibility that our decision holds us financially responsible. It's our partnership, I believe, that does that, and the mutual benefit that does.
And you have given us the land.
We have. We just didn't determine exactly what, you know, this amount.
Additional questions or comments?
Well, you know, as, as I look at this, you know, I, I think the, the sales tax is, is going to produce the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We're not going to spend the money till it comes in, because we're not going to bond the project. So, I just see it as, as low risk. I think, I think the tax is going to provide the money. I think we get the benefit of, and we get access to storm shelter, something I hadn't thought about, you know, which, which is, which is beneficial. And as far as the school board, you know, kicking in the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, you know, I think it's only fair that we split it, but we also waived all the building fees, so I think that was a hundred-and-thirty thousand of that right there that you hadn't planned on because I know that was part of your original bond thing.
Which I will remind them of next week when.
Yep. So, so that, you know, so I, I think, you know, this is just the way it's going to have to go, and if, if the sales tax ends up not bringing in enough to cover it, then at that future date, three or four years from now, you can cut out one of the amenities, you know, some structure or something in top that would make up the difference. But I, I think it'll fall into place, so I'm, I'm, I'm pretty confident with the motion that's here. I think it's, it's adequate. I don't like seeing the price go up, but I think it'll work.
Okay, well, let's hear from the public and then we'll come back to the commission. So, anyone wishing to make a comment on this item, please come forward, state your name and address, and I'd love to hear from you. and address, and I'd love to hear from you. Okay, seeing no one, we'll come back to the commissioner then.
It, it seems to me that this partnership is important, and I want to continue it. I think that the sales tax will overproduce by the 250,000 that we're talking now. I think it's, you know, I look at the explanation about the positioning of the gym and the movement, and it's all in an effort to calibrate this and get it in the right place, and I do buy into that. I, I believe that this storm shelter, tornado shelter, is an important aspect for both of these schools, and I want to see that happen. And I want the Manhattan side, the public side, to have access to that shelter also as we go forward. So if it's an extra door, a card or something, that's important. And we don't have public shelters here. And so I don't know what that means to, but I know that when there's a tornado siren blowing, it matters and to, to people who don't have those shelters. So I think that this is doable. I am, you know, as, as concerned as the rest of the commission, I'm sure, about changes. But these are huge projects, and I don't want a budget overrun either. But I think that in this case, we're actually tinkering with, and, and it'll be better for the public and for the schoolchildren if we work together and do this well. So I'll support the, the motion.
Just make one more comment. So I just want to be clear that I understand why we're doing this. So that's, that wasn't my issue. My issue was the increase in cost. So if we do move forward with it, I'd rather look at it, I still don't want to increase the cost. I would, and this will probably pass, and I'll probably be voting no, I think we should at least look at maybe, what does it look like if we take out the artificial turf? What does it look like if we remove some of those things? Because my experience has been with any of these projects that we allocate money to, dedicate money to, it increases. It's never decreased. There's always other things that come up. So this is just one of those things that came up now before we even moved forward with anything. But as we move forward, I guarantee there's going to be a lot of changes coming to that 17 million dollars. So that's my concern. So I'd rather look at, since we didn't build anything or go forward with anything, at least removing something out of our original plan. But I'm not going to be in favor of increasing it for this particular project right now.
See, you make a good point on the artificial turf, but that's why I'm saying at the end of this, if there's some kind of crunch, those things can be dropped off because that's not part of the building, right? I mean, the building's built, you can just say, I'm not buying the artificial turf?
Yeah, I, I think you should be careful because that's going to limit its flexibility and its ability for groups to use the facilities, which is something we want to be careful with. We want to make sure that these facilities are, have as much flexibility to attract as much crowd, tournament play, activities as possible. And we take artificial out, I think you really take a, a big user group out. So that, that gives me concern. That's why I said that originally. I really want to be careful eliminating. That was one of the, the highest priorities from our steering committee as well.
Okay, but, but you could look at those amenities in the end if there was some crisis and, you know, I don't envision that happening.
Remember, our process also is a GMP process. McCown Gordon is going to give us a guaranteed maximum price. We're just trying to help get established if we're going to increase that 17 million a little bit to accommodate the site work. But they're going to be bringing back a guaranteed maximum price when you talk about future change orders or something. I mean, that's, that's part of the reason we went this process.
So...
Is that the one that's coming in three weeks?
Yes.
Okay. So 17 million dollars is not the maximum then? They're, we're waiting for a maximum? Is that what you're saying?
We anticipated the budget to be 17 million dollars for both those projects. They have an obligation to deliver a guaranteed maximum price. They know what our budget is of, of 17 million dollars. So they'll be putting their pricing out. They'll have an obligation to deliver to us a GMP. The city administration will evaluate that, and we will bring that to the city commission for that approval. That's what has to happen before we enter into phase two contract with, for the final design and construction.
I have another question. Commissioner Butler's comments bring up a good point because I had forgotten about the aspect that we weren't bonding out this project. But will we actually near the, I mean, the building's going to be done before the end of the 10 years that the tax expires? So what, I mean, what opportunity would we have to cut then if it came in short?
We wouldn't be able to through that tenure. I mean, we're, we're looking to where we would be cutting. We've always spoke of if the sales tax underperformed, that realistically, the CECO project would be reduced.
Got it. So the...
We're generating enough revenue through the first seven years that we will pay. We will be temp noting the projects. Bernie, you'll have to help me through that. We'll be temp noting those projects as we continue to collect revenue, and we'll pay all that off within about year six, year seven. That's why we're not doing all the projects at one time. We'll have a little bit of pause after we construct the recreation centers as then we collect revenue before we start the CECO improvements.
So I, I guess the general point then is if we vote that yes on this tonight and this underperforms, it's not necessarily going to hurt the Rec Centers, it's going to hurt the CECO park.
If we were to underperform, that would be the case.
Okay. I just, I have this, I have this a little bit of an angst that we're making a budget determination by crossing our fingers and hoping that it keeps going the rate that it's going. And I feel like that's largely the reason why we're in a position now that we have to raise the mill every year. So I, I, while I, I agree that the city should take on the 250,000 share, I, I do wish we could see more options and, options within the recreation center. Or, I mean, I, I guess it's going to impact the CECO Park project. It's just, it's just weird that we're essentially proving a budget, but we actually don't know if that money exists or not. And I, I guess that's the place we'll always find ourselves in in these long-term tax projects, but we come up with an estimate that's conservative and then we base a project on that estimate. If we knew that there was going to be up and down increases and we had that estimated, I wish we would have estimated, fit our original building project into that kind of thought of that, I guess. Because I feel like tonight I'm voting on something that could be a problem for a commission two, three years from now.
We could have that same potential problem without this discussion of this increased site work. We could have the same scenario.
I agree, but we're, we're exacerbating the, we're making that scenario more likely by increasing the budget of the project.
Our, our history certainly talks to us in a different way. From the past sales tax that we had, we actually sunsetted it early because it performed well. So I mean, our history tells us we're going to outperform what our projections are.
Okay.
I mean, you've got two things here. I mean, maybe three. We have a process that we may not like, but if you're in business, this is a process you go through every single day when you're building something. You make an estimate, you set up financing, the bids come in, and you just hope that your estimators are doing the best job they possibly can. So here, we've got a guaranteed maximum price. That's the way that works. And then you can also bet that the contractor has a contingency inside that 17 million. He's not going to say, I'm going to build it for 17 million. He's going to build it for maybe 15, 4 or something, so he has 8% to work with for contingency because things always go wrong.
I, I agree with you, Mayor, but I guess my hesitation with that is we don't have the same incentive necessarily of a business owner, right? Like, a business makes a bad investment or vastly underestimate something, they go bankrupt. If we make a bad assessment or vastly underestimate something, we just raise your mill. So there's different things on the line.
If you're a corporation, somebody else pays, I mean, for your mistakes. So it's, it's just kind of how you're set up. If you're a private company and you have no outside funding, no outside shareholders, then you pay the whole thing. You're right, you might go bankrupt. That's the reason you're, you're normally very conservative on your estimates. So...
I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right.
Okay. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city administration to finalize and the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement with USD 383 to modify the middle school's recreation center SP 1802 plans and specs to reflect the district's preferred orientation of the recreation centers, requiring an approximately 500,000 dollar increase in cost and accept the payment of up to 250,000 from the district to satisfy the district's obligation to share equally in that increase.
Dale's second.
Go both ways.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
How?
And Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. So the remaining two items tonight are discussion items, and the first of those two remaining items is item D. And the discussion item is to consider the proposal received for the community house building at Fourth Street and Humboldt Street. And again, the presenter is Eddie Eastus.
Commissioners, I appreciate the previous discussion. We have another good one here tonight on the community house. I want to just touch base quickly on the timeline for this RFP. Some development terms that have been negotiated with Switchgrass Development. Draft agreement is in your packet tonight. Proposed grant to help support the redevelopment. Some options are a option to finance that grant, and then Ben Burton is, his team is here to make a presentation to you tonight as well. You've seen the request for proposal. You've had the discussion about it previously. We started back in January of this year. If you recall, we just received one proposal back from the community, and that was from local developer Ben Burton and his team, again, that's here tonight. We had a selection committee. That selection committee, since there was just the one proposal, and the information in the original proposal was maybe, maybe not what they were after exactly, they all agreed to request a draft development agreement from the developer so that they could have a little better perspective of what the development potentially could be. For the last several months, city administration and Ben Burton's team have been negotiating terms. And again, you have that information and that draft agreement in your packet. Basically, the terms in that agreement was for the city to sell the community house to Ben Burton and his team for $1, a $1 purchase price. That sale would be subject to restricted covenant. Again, that is in your packet, that covenant, but main aspects of it are that the building remains on the state and national register, and then it's maintained, repaired, renovated, operated, everything in compliance with rules, regulations that governs its status on the historic, as a historic structure, and its listing on the register. And that covenant would be enforceable by the city of Manhattan. It could not be amended or removed without the written consent of the city commission. If any violations occurred, the developer would have 30 days to correct, or the city could take action towards that developer. Prior to any closing in that agreement, a preliminary design must be completed, a cost estimate must be developed, and that cost estimate must be a minimum of $2 million. And the use of that facility has to be identified, whether it's residential, commercial, office, or a combination of those. The city commission would be presented with that preliminary design, that cost estimate, and the use, and the city commission would have to approve all of those. That has to occur prior to any closing. Then, of course, approval of building permit, review of tax credit application, and the anticipating closing date, if we keep progressing, would be February 1 of 2020. And don't anticipate that to be later than May 1 of 2020. So trying to establish some timelines so that if we're able to move forward, the developer intends to, to move rather quickly. The corporation requirements, the corporation is Ben Burton and his team after closing. His final design has to be completed within 90 days of closing. That final design and that cost estimate has to be submitted to the city commission for approval. That final design and estimate of cost that developer, Ben Burton's team, is obligated to spend 90% of that estimated cost that that city commission would see and have to They would have to be under construction within 30 days of their building permit being issued, and construction completed within 100 days, 180 days after the initial construction begins. Those are all requirements that are contained in that agreement. I spoke of a grant. The city and the developer have negotiated a $500,000 grant to assist with, again, the minimum of $2 million renovation. I think it's important to note, if you choose to sell the community house for the redevelopment, it does release the city from a financial liability of the expense of maintaining and managing that community house. It returns that community house as an asset to the community to generate jobs, housing, and future sales tax and property tax. Bruce McMillan's evaluation is in your packet as well. You've seen that several times. Currently, we have accessibility issues with the community house, and we've actually, Parks and Recreation has moved some programs out of it. We do not utilize 100% of the facility because it certainly is not accessible. Bruce McMillan's estimate that you had seen previously, to be able to bring that facility up to proper accessibility is in the $2 million range. They're expensive to be able to put an elevator in to access the upper floors, as well as simply the ADA ramp to be able to get into the front of the building. Currently, we have a, a lift in the back that is in disrepair and has a 30 or 40,000 dollar expense to replace. That's part of why we've moved some of our programs out of the facility because the facility right now is just not accessible. The $500,000 grant would only be available to the developer once he invested $2 million into the facility. It's not a initial $500,000 to get the project started. He has to show some investment in the facility before that would be applied. Options to finance the grant, meaning where does the $500,000, where would it come from? One source could be the Economic Development Fund for that $500,000. And the city could capture the growth generated in property taxes to pay back that Economic Development Fund. A renovated community house in excess of $2 million renovation, private ownership is estimated to generate 40 to 50,000 annual in property taxes. Again, that could be captured and used to pay back that Economic Development Fund. Again, the commission would have an opportunity because the use of economic development funds would require the commission to make a determination that the, the grant, the use of that Economic Development Fund is for economic development purposes. So again, you get an opportunity to be able to evaluate based on the uses of that facility that you feel like those funds would be available to supply that grant. Again, it would be an investment, so to speak, from the city with the development that would reduce future city tax burden of maintaining... reduce future city tax burden of maintaining a facility right now that we, Parks and Recreation, don't heavily use because it's not as accessible as we need it to be. And frankly, the gymnasium of it is inadequate, the size of it, the shape of it, the condition of it. As I said, Ben Burton and his team is here with a presentation for you tonight. Unless you have some specific questions for me now or once Ben is done, I'll just stand aside and let him present.
Eddie, I do have a question.
Okay.
That I probably should go right after your presentation because I'm confused with the interchangeable use of the word loan and grant. We have loans out of the Economic Development Fund and we have, I don't know, grants, I suppose. But you've been using those terms interchangeably. And I, so I guess I would like a firm explanation of what the intent is.
I'll look to Rowan City Manager as well.
So the, the intent here is that the, we, the grant, it is a grant to the developer after they've invested $2 million of their own money and that's been verified. The concept is, is that of the loan is that the, if the city wanted those grant funds to be regenerated, then we could use future property taxes and have the general fund pay that back. The developer would not be obligated. So it is a grant to the developer for investing $2 million in the facility originally and putting that property back on the property tax rolls.
So this scheme sort of like a local TIF district?
The, at $40,000 to $50,000 of tax revenue to the city, you can argue that from 10 to 12 years, we could pay back the $500,000 into the EcoDevo fund. That's the loan part. It's a loan to the fund.
I'm interested in knowing how that plays out. So can Bernie, from the property taxes that are paid to the county, pay, then passed on to the city? Would you be able to target that money right back into the Economic Development Fund? I can't get there connection wise.
We could. We've done, we've done similar things where we put footnotes and perhaps in the budget. You've seen some of those footnotes. I think the loan that we made to the Manhattan Housing Authority is going to be a good example because we have a footnote that that is to be paid back over a period of time. So yes, we can do that. And typically what we do, we'll make those footnotes in the annual budget so future commissions, future finance directors can see that and understand what that process is.
Well, I understand about the housing authority loan because that money will be a payment. This is going to be, if this rationale holds, is the property tax is expected to replenish the Economic Development Fund.
So you wouldn't?
I don't see how that's going to work.
Wouldn't be able to have anything that would be binding.
No trail.
You can't bind a future commission to make that payment. But you could certainly have the motion and potentially even pass a resolution so that future commissioners would know the intent of this commission was, was to use those property taxes, who's nobody has ever gotten before, to repay the EcoDevo fund if that's something that, that you so choose. You don't have to do that if you, you know, you want to make economic development for, in this case, it's, it's, it's helping, we don't know the final, but it's a mixed-use development. So there's certainly, you could make that there's an economic development argument in this project. That, that's another, but. That's a revenue source that we've never received off this tract of land or that facility. And so it is kind of like a TIF. It's an increment of growth that could be used to pay back the Economic Development Fund if that was the intent of the commission. And certainly, we could memorialize that intent through some instrument like a resolution so that future governing bodies would know that that was the intent. You can't obligate them, but that would be one way of doing it.
I think it's a great method. I was a little concerned at first about, you know, $500,000 on the grant, but I really liked, this is an option because I've always felt like we should take some of the economic development money and invest it in local business. And this is a way, it's invested and then it'll be regenerated. It can be invested again in somebody else's project four or five years from now. And then just like the old EcoDevo things, there'll maybe always be some residuals in there now, if we pass a new one in two years because this money would fall under that old ordinance then if it went back into that fund.
I guess, why is it part of the proposal to pay back the Economic Development Fund to begin with?
It wouldn't have to be. I mean, that's certainly a discussion item and part of the.
But I'm curious of what brought it up here. Because I mean, we haven't done some, at least while I've been on the commission, we haven't done something like that before.
And the materials.
We've done.
I thought part of the use of Economic Development Fund was to generate more revenue in the general fund.
Certainly, the general fund would benefit more in that, that scenario. So I think the intent was a way to utilize proceeds that we have in the Economic Development Fund. And whether or not you want to pay those back is certainly part of the discussion.
I was just curious if the chamber had a problem, if that's why it came up.
I don't think they weighed in or, yeah.
So one of the things we use, how we did typical, traditionally with the EcoDevo funds was they did go through the chamber. And they had, I think it was through the chamber, they had that whole application process for how many jobs they would create. So was that discussed? I understand the whole property taxes coming back onto the tax rolls and all of that. Was the job creation discussed in this? I don't remember. Maybe it was in the packet, but I don't remember seeing that.
No, it was not. And that's part of the reason it would also be a loan to an internal fund as opposed to the applicant. We're not making the, the only thing the applicant has to do to perform is invest the $2 million. And, and abide by the covenants. So it's not a traditional economic development deal.
It's unique to this situation, but at the same time, because it is unique to this situation, we should probably have something in place so other members in the community or business organizations will have an option on how to use those Economic Development Funds. If this one, if this is one of those proposals, being creative on how we use that. Because traditionally, I think EcoDevo creating job, job creation as one of the major ways how we've been funding it. But this is loan slash grant kind of thing. Because it can come back. That's why they're taking it. It can be put back into that loan so it's being repaid back. I, I think this is a, a unique way to use the EcoDevo funds. And I certainly don't have any objection to the project being proposed. But I want to, the parameters are pretty vast, vast in the sense there's a lot of, so the timeline and the process, it's pretty detailed, in my opinion. So I would like to see that come back and be used in the community. And it went through the two major organizations about the Historic Preservation Board and is it the Planning Board, Manhattan, Parks and Rec Board? So both of them also approved it. So I think it's been vetted quite a bit and the proposal is out there. So I think this is an interesting way to use those funds. I'd like to hear more from the applicant once we're done.
I have one more question for staff. In the scenario that it does in the future get pulled off the state or national register, how does that work? What is the blowback to the?
If, I'm sorry.
So there's a requirement that it has to stay on the state and national register as a historical building? I don't know much about the historical preservation process, but I thought if you changed a certain amount of the building or something happened, it got pulled off the register. What happens if they don't follow one of these parameters?
Well, the city commission would have the authority to, I have to be careful. Rachel, you might have to weigh in on that because.
Either Rachel or Bill could weigh in. And basically, we'd be enforcing the covenant.
And what is enforcement? Yeah. Are we just gonna, are we just gonna find them or are we gonna take back the building?
Uh. They are not allowed to do something that would jeopardize the status of the historic preservation. The covenant that's on there mandates that they comply with everything necessary to maintain that. If for some reason they did something or were threatening to do something, or it looked like they were doing something, the city could enforce that covenant.
And what's enforcement?
Pardon me?
What's enforcement?
Well, it'd probably take a lawsuit. We'd probably have to sue them to, and join them from doing whatever it is they were threatening to do that would jeopardize that status.
Okay. And does that status and these parameters maintain if that, this organization were to sell this to another private entity?
That's the reason for the covenant. It goes with the land. So no matter who owns it, is going to be obligated to comply with that covenant.
Okay. Thank you.
The developer also is planning to use historic tax credits. So those, those credits in that revenue stream will require them to ensure that aspect.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there's really much of an incentive for the developer not to maintain that status, but I know that there's member of the public that are concerned about that. So I just wanted to make sure that we address that as well.
Hello. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name's Ben Burton. I'm representing our team, Tyler Holloman and Gavin Schmidt. We are all three local Manhattan business owners, Manhattan property investors, experience in development, property management, financing, construction. Before I review our proposal, I first wanted to take you back through our due diligence process and kind of how we got to what's before you today. And really, this process took two different paths. The first path, as you've mentioned, the historic, the historic designations. And this began last year back in November. City staff requested input from the Historic Resources Board. And it was evident from that meeting the importance of those state and national designations. So we took that information and contacted the Kansas SHIPPO office. And our goal there was to, to start to learn more about the building and find out what was possible in the building, what historical features would need to be maintained. So we were able to meet with them on site, walk through the property, utilize their expertise. And a main piece that came from that was the need to submit a preliminary plan to SHIPPO for their review. And then they would pass that on to the National Park Service for their input as well. Our goal with that submittal was to understand what was possible within the space specifically from a subdivision standpoint. So how much usable square footage can we use within the community house? And that's where we, we start to go down the other path of the investment side. So in that proposal, we proposed subdividing the garden level, similar to what you've seen today. And we proposed the gymnasium space as all residential on two levels, completely subdividing the gymnasium with a common corridor down the middle. Again, trying to figure out how much square footage was available to us. If you'll remember around that time, the, the federal government was going through a shutdown. So we knew that feedback from the National Park Service would be slow or when that would come was still in question. But in the meantime, in January, you, the governing body, did approve the RFP process. And we began to utilize that time to meet with a local contractor to start to put together some budget numbers, a contractor with experience in historic preservation and renovation. We met with a local architect to put together some design features to better understand really what this could look like conceptually as well. At the end of January, the federal government had reopened. SHIPPO was able to present our plan to the National Park Service. And at that point, we really felt comfortable with what we had on paper, but we also wanted to get the business community's feedback. So we requested a meeting with DMI. We wanted the downtown stakeholders' feedback, answer any of their questions, and listen to their concerns as well. So on February 21st, we were able to present to the DMI board and receive their feedback. And coincidentally, that same day, we received feedback from the National Park Service. And what we found out from the National Park Service was the garden level could be subdivided in a number of ways, but the gymnasium could only be subdivided up to half of that space. So in theory, you could walk into the gymnasium as it sits. You could have residential on either side on two levels to the half court line of the current basketball court. And then beyond that, it would need to be maintained as an open space. We submitted the RFP in March. With all of that due diligence in place, we felt comfortable bringing a proposal to you. And then, as Eddie mentioned, between March and May, we worked on, on the agreement that's also in your packet. On May 20th, we presented to the Historic Resources Board. We received some really good feedback, feedback that has been both implemented in the agreement and in our, in our proposed design. And I'll, I'll touch on that in a minute. And then in the Parks and Rec Board, we were able to present to them on June 3rd. We were honored, Commissioner Morse was able to listen, see our proposal for the first time and hear their feedback as well, which was, which was all very positive. Continuing down the historic preservation path, the Bruce McMillan study had a letter from the Kansas Historical Society, and we use this as source information as well. And it focuses on specific design characteristics of the building that would need to be maintained, the exterior design and integrity, keeping the front stairwell in its current form and fashion. There's a fireplace on the garden level, I'll show you pictures of in a minute, historic columns, doors, windows, various items throughout the building. And then this last bullet points really in response to the historic board. And one of the board members asked that there be an additional design feature, a storyboard, something that when you walk into the community house, you have the opportunity to learn its history and, and know a little bit more about the building you're in. And that's a feature we would want to add. We would want to work with the Riley County Museum, the Rotarians, anyone who's open, who has a sense of history for that building, we would want to work with them to put together that design feature. So the next path we went down, we, we put on our investor hat, kind of that home inspector hat. What, what is the state of play? What is the building condition? What investments would need to be made to bring it up to code and meet the, meet all of the, the applicable guidelines? The exterior, you can see some tuck pointing would possibly be needed. You have some window AC units that would be removed with an upgraded HVAC, HVAC system. Plywood over a window, that window would be brought back to, to life. This is just a photo of the interior stairway and entry. And I'll go through these quick. I, I know everyone's familiar with the community house, but this is that stairway that would need to be kept in its, its current form and fashion. The, the bottom right photo is a photo from the balcony level. So if you're standing at the current partition, looking back at the stairway. The garden level, again, that historic fireplace there on your left, the columns on your right. Looking at it a little more closely, there's some temporary walls that have been added, some radiator pipes, things like that. So when you're estimating demolition costs and items like that, those are things we look at. The gymnasium, there's a temporary drop ceiling that was added. We would look at removing that temporary drop ceiling. From what I understand, there's five to six feet of space above that, back up to the original ceiling height. We would look at bringing it back up to that. If you look in the back right-hand corner, that door is where you would access the current lift. That lift is, is not usable in its current condition, but that is where it is currently located. And then where the basketball goal is, that is the partition that was added after construction, blocking off the stage from the gymnasium. These are just some photos of the current usage. And again, looking at window condition, wall condition, flooring condition. These are, these are where the proposed residential suites would be. Again, more office space and storage spaces as it's currently being utilized. The stage area as it's currently being utilized. That exit sign leads you to a small hallway. If you turn right, you're back in the gymnasium. If you turn left, you actually have another point of egress to the back parking lot. And then again, just looking at some of the features, really looking at it from a home inspector point of view, what is the condition of the windows? There's some bars on the windows, some cracks, there's towels in the windows. Those obviously would need to be replaced in their current condition. And then again, just other, I would call it deferred maintenance items that we would need to be addressed or anyone would need to do, address in, in a renovation. So moving on to our proposal, we're proposing a mixed-use project of both commercial, residential, and then utilizing the gym as a multifunctional space. The commercial aspect, we envision on the garden level, they would be 10 individual efficient office suites that are individually rentable by the business community, common conference. conference room and reception, residential, six residential, one-bedroom loft-style apartments. Those would be located on the front of the building. So if you look at the picture, you can see the front windows, the ground floor, it's currently utilizes the pottery class, women's restroom. The main level, you're looking at office space. And then the third level, which is the current, or the balcony, is currently being utilized as storage. So diving in a little bit into those conceptual drawings that we provided, this is the garden level, that commercial area where we would have those office suites. If you look in the back right-hand corner, you can see the doors that would lead to those suites. The left side is meant more of a kind of a peek behind the curtain. So in the actual design, there would be a wall there, but we left that open so you could kind of see what would be behind those doors, additional office space. Again, all centered around this common conference room that utilizes that historic fireplace as a centerpiece, a coffee bar, workstation right in the middle of the space, using those historic columns as bookends for that space. And then a comfortable reception area, if you have a customer, a client, impromptu meeting, all can be held there. Digging a little bit deeper into that floor plan, this is again, a rough floor plan, but it has those 10 office suites ranging in 120 square feet to 220 square feet, really in response to the current market conditions and what we're seeing in the marketplace. Conference room, lounge, all centered around those offices. The left side of this floor plan is the front of the community house, that's where those apartments would be. So the top right is the current women's restroom, the bottom left is the current pottery class. And then as you look to the back of the building or the left side of this drawing, mechanical, common restroom, and then in the bottom right-hand corner, another stairwell, a second form of egress out of the space. Moving up a level, the gymnasium, we envision this ideally as a multifunctional space that's able to host a wide variety of events, receptions, community meetings. I know there's a lot of entrepreneurial groups in town looking for space, a collaborative open space that's rentable and shareable with the public. Based on the National Park Service's feedback, we felt comfortable with adding this mezzanine level. And really, the goal there was to provide a little bit more square footage, maybe some additional seating, a view out those second-story windows down Fourth Street, back to Points, and really another vantage point of the gymnasium in that large, open space that it is. Residential design, we would look at an urban feel, a downtown feel, not a lot of walls, open area. If there's exposed brick, we'd love to use it as long as it meets those historical guidelines in front of us, but again, that downtown feel. We really envision the renovation bringing modern office and residential amenities while preserving those historic features that make the community house what it is. Part of that would be high-speed Wi-Fi and fiber throughout the building. So whether you're a resident, whether you're attending a function, or you're in one of those business suites, you have access to that Wi-Fi. Last year, a partner of mine and I, we put together a project on the west side of town. And as part of that, we created five Wi-Fi zones within a 6,000 square feet office space. And you really broke that up into quadrants so that each quadrant had access to Wi-Fi. And then there was a guest password or a guest Wi-Fi network. And really, the goal there was to ensure that everyone had the capabilities they needed, whether it was accepting a credit card payment, listening to music, video production, whatever that might be, ensuring that that was in place for them. And we worked with a local communications company, put that together. Energy efficient upgrades, windows, HVAC, make this a code-compliant facility, fire suppression, alarm, monitored alarm services, all of the code standards that we're kept to on any new construction project. And then again, modernizing the building, but retaining those historical features that make it what it is. Construction schedule, Eddie talked to you a little bit about this, but our goal would be to be back before you by the end of the year with that final design and budget. We would really like to start construction next year. There's also 75 days or so of SHIPO and National Park Service review to qualify for those tax credits, but we would like to have that design back to you, hopefully in November for your review, with the goal of in February pulling a building permit, or excuse me, applying for a building permit. I believe our code department's three to four weeks out on a building permit of this size. And then, as Eddie mentioned, potentially closing on February 1st, no later than May 1st. Beginning construction within 30 days, ideally in March, with that six-month timeframe, looking at a September to October of 2020 completion. We built in a little bit of cushion that if we need a little more time, a couple more months, because we'd really like to put this building in service in 2020, and then that full value of that property tax could even be realized in 2021. The community house lies within C4 zoning. Within C4 zoning, there is not a specific parking requirement. When we met with DMI, there was multiple questions on parking and how we would handle that. We would mainly look to utilize city lots, street parking, and mainly, if you look at the top middle, the parking lot where the farmer's market takes place. I would say that these aerials are an accurate representation of how these lots look on a daily basis. The lot where the farmer's market is Monday through Friday pretty much looks like that, and the lot behind the community house is pretty well always full. So we would treat that in a way as a training opportunity for those who are attending the community house or specifically work in the community house. It takes me back to my days as a grocer at the age of 16, and my first boss said, "You park in the back of the lot, the customer parks in the front." Business 101, let the customer have the best spot. So we would really use that as a training opportunity and make an effort that we utilize that lot where there is more space and really you're one crosswalk away from being in the community house. On the residential side, within C4 zoning, there is the purple zone, which means if you come to the city office, you pay a $5 fee, you show them your lease, proof that you live within the district, you're able to park overnight in a city-owned lot. I believe that the hours are maybe 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM, but you can park in those lots without getting a ticket, similar to our campus areas, Green Zone, the Thurstons, the Bertrand's, where that's required for street parking. Oh, I'm sorry. As an overview for the renovation, we would engage a consultant for this project. Commissioner, you mentioned it, yes, the state and federal historic tax credits are important to this project. We would want to make sure we are meeting the standard and qualifying for those. And to do that, we would need to engage a consultant. We've had some preliminary discussions with Brenda Spencer. She most recently worked on the building at Third and Points where the Wing Lion, 502 Media, The Village Geek are located. So she does have local experience. We received a budget from BHS of $2.75 million. Again, that's based on the design as we proposed it today. As Eddie mentioned, we would be required to make a $2 million investment before we qualified for that performance grant. When we first started this process, we had asked for $250,000 at the beginning when the building permit was pulled, and then we had asked for another $250,000 when we had our certificate of occupancy. Feedback from city staff, from some of the boards, we decided and agree that it's best to take that at the end, once we've proven, once we've shown we're going to perform on what we said we would perform on. Again, utilizing state and historic tax credits and that restrictive covenant. From the beginning, we've seen this as a Manhattan-centric project. I mentioned, all three of us are Manhattan business owners, we all are real estate investors in the city of Manhattan. We understand and as a general philosophy, believe on all our projects, when we utilize local talent, local resources, we source local materials. Not only are we helping the labor market, we're helping with sales tax, and we're also building a sense of pride in our buildings, because I think when people drive by them, they say, "Hey, I worked on that. I did the mechanical there. I did the concrete there." So building that pride in this project, it's the community house, it almost demands community assets be utilized. We've already engaged a local law firm, a local architect, communications company and general contractor. And again, we'll prioritize using Manhattan-based building materials. So I presented our due diligence process, I talked to you a little bit about our design. So where does that fit into the bigger picture? The total public and private investment in our downtown is over $200 million. We believe that investment needs to be protected. And we feel, how do you protect that investment? You ask what's next? What's the next piece of development? What's the next enhancement you can complete to bring businesses into our community, into our downtown district, whether it's shoppers, families going out to a restaurant, entrepreneurs? Marketplace trends, these are all trends that you are seeing, these are themes that you work with on a number of projects. But again, that shift in dynamic of a desire for urban living, walkability, bikeability, public transportation. We've found that young, talented workers want to live in these dense locations with these amenities accessible to them. Remote freelance work, desire for diversity in the workplace, Wi-Fi accessibility, collaborative spaces, again, all those trends that we're seeing that the workplace is looking for. Again, adding density through residential development, I talked a little bit about that at the beginning, but what can we do to spur additional investment in our downtown, whether it's shopping, dining, entrepreneurial activities, future investors who want to look at our downtown and see the investments that have been made and want to continue that momentum that's already been created by a number of investors in the city of Manhattan? Utilizing existing infrastructure is a big point for me. As a developer, I have utilized the specials mechanism, so I understand a little bit how it works. In a project like this, we're utilizing the existing infrastructure. The streets are there, the sidewalks are there, water's right at the door, sewer service is right at the door. So really, it's a savings to the taxpayer and a reduced liability to the city. And then again, attracting those vibrant talent workers, talented workers. The Chambers talked a lot about retaining talent, attracting talent. Today's workforce, I believe, looks for more than just a paycheck. They look for a sense of place, they look for livability when they're choosing which job to take. And we think the community house really adds to that for our downtown and Manhattan. Finally, I want to apologize, I want to change this slightly. When I wrote this, I don't think it's totally correct. I think it's really historic preservation, public-private partnership and economic development. The community house checks all three of those boxes for us, preserving a historic building in our downtown Manhattan, bringing in jobs, adding residential, adding sales tax, property tax revenue to the district, and none of it's possible without a public and private partnership. The bottom, the Charleston Principles, I had included these in our packet with the Historic Resources Board. And if you go to the Manhattan-Riley County Preservation Alliance, you'll find this list of principles as their guiding principles. We'd included these originally because we felt that every single one of them, the themes held within them were a part of this project. I wanted to read real quick number three for you. Create organizational, regulatory and incentive mechanisms to facilitate preservation and provide leadership to make them work. I think there's a couple things there that touch on this project, but specifically in closing, I wanted to bring up the leadership aspect. This truly has been a community project. This presentation wouldn't be possible without the input from a variety of groups, city staff, the Historic Resources Board, the Parks and Rec Board, the public comments we've received at those meetings. It truly has been a fine piece of leadership by community members to help bring this together. And it's been a lot of fun to get it here today.
That was an excellent presentation. So, well, I'm really excited to see where this is going to go. I think it is definitely the right proposal for this building, and hopefully, everything you've presented comes to fruition the way you envision it. I think it would be a great asset to the community. It makes me a little bit more confident after watching your thorough presentation from beginning to end and your vision for downtown and for the community, especially using community resources and keeping all of that intact. So thank you for that good, well-developed presentation.
Let's ask for public comment at this time. Anyone having comments, please come forward, state your name and address, and let us hear your thoughts.
Good evening. I'm Linda Glasgow, 2236 Snowbird Drive. I attend almost every single Historic Resources Board meeting, and I do have a question. Jason Hilgers made a presentation at one of those meetings, and his comment was that we don't have to keep this building on the National Register as an individual building because it'll just revert to being part of the historic district and it'll still get all of the goodie involved with that. I would like to make sure that you're talking about retaining its individual status and not the plan that Jason Hilgers had presented. Is that correct?
I don't know. We typically don't answer questions.
Okay.
But certainly get you an answer.
A concern, thank you. In attending the Historic Resources Board meeting, I don't remember them giving approval. I remember feedback, but I don't remember voting approval. So I think that's an important distinction. So some of the feedback is very positive and some less so. And I think it would be worth your while, if you're concerned about what the feedback is, to go back and look. I think that is available to you. I have a question about the mention of an elevator being installed, whereas the presentation at the Historic Resources Board was saying it would just be a lift. And so that's another question that if we're going to say it's an elevator, it should end up being an elevator. In terms of the appreciation of history, having served on the Friends of Peace Memorial Auditorium Board of Directors, we have some experience in displaying the appreciation of history of the building. It was an extraordinarily important building for generations of Manhattanites, and I think that that needs to be stressed. It was also deeply associated with World War I and World War II. That needs to be stressed. And I do have, there was a mention of the Rotarians, and the reason is, is because they had a great deal to do with the funding of the building initially. What do the Rotarians think about this plan? I think you should find that out. Parking. One of my colleagues lives at the Awaram Apartments, and they have parking supposedly, unless some other citizen decides that they're just going to put their car in your spot. So I've heard, most of the time, it works out fine, but every now and again, there's a problem. I think parking should be really addressed in this issue. You shouldn't just be frustrated and get shoved off your spot and just say, "Oh, well." If you're carrying your groceries in, you need to have your parking that's been assigned to you to be your parking. And I think that that becomes very important when it's you that's carrying the groceries. So that should be brought out. Back to the appreciation of history, I do think that we're a transient community, many people do not know what the history of this building is, how important it was to the citizenry. I wonder if, going back in time, if they knew that this building was going to undergo this change and not be a true community building owned by the public and enjoyed by the public, what they would think. So this is a difficult decision, I know. And I think a lot of people have an open mind, but finding a way... But finding a way to provide a transient population with an appreciation of the history of the building is important to me, and it should be important to everyone, and particularly as it focuses on our sense of patriotism. So I do know that there is a pattern. We know how to do it. Just a few storyboards might not do the trick. So I urge you to think about all of these things and to seek the feedback that you're talking about from the Historic Resources Board. There were some excellent comments, but it wasn't every single Pollyanna positive comment. So please, don't just assume it was positive. Thank you.
Anyone else, please? Seeing none, we'll come back to the commission for the comments.
Yeah, I'll start. So I'm supportive of this plan, as is for a few reasons. First and foremost, one of the things that I think's really amazing about what communities like the downtown of Kansas City have done in their districts is taking these old manufacturing, textile buildings that are very similar to what the Community House is and turning them into these extraordinarily beautiful, nice lofts and apartments and office spaces. And they did that through private investment. And it has led to kind of a revitalization of that area. And to me, that is a better way to honor the historical presence of those buildings than letting the building continue to rot because the city can't continue to make the investments necessarily to update it. So I think that this partnership with a private entity is a good one and, in my opinion, lead to kind of valuing its history even more. I assume when Ben and his team come back to present the final site plans, we'll know a little bit more about how you're going to present that history, potentially in the lobby after you do some of this consulting with other organizations, so we can weigh in a little bit more thoroughly there on those issues. The other thing addressed about parking, I'm fine with how the parking is set up currently. I think, I appreciate you including that screenshot in of the overhead view. I think it's abysmal, the amount of space that we waste on concrete parking areas because we have, society has convinced ourselves that we need it so desperately. So I'm absolutely fine with the parking standard staying as is. And then the last thing I just want to note is, I think it's really important that we also, and I'm glad that you brought it up, think about the economic development aspect of this. I have often been talking with the chamber about additional creative ways that we can spurs economic development in our community. And when we try to convince, our whole economic development strategy is convincing other businesses to move to our community. That's a game that will end in a bad way for us. And if you look at other communities that are having a lot of success, this is exactly the kinds of things that they're doing. They're finding ways to attract remote workers and those workers that have a little bit of an entrepreneurial spirit to build a business in their town. And those workers tend to want to live in urban environments much like this one and have spaces much like this one. So I think that this is a really good partnership, not only for the historical preservation of this building, but also the economic development of the city as a whole. This is one little piece that we need in a big puzzle. So I'm really happy and pleased to move forward with the project. And one other point that I want to make, and I think I might be stealing this line from somebody else, but we have to have, there's contingency, obviously, in this development about what would happen if, or this plan, what would happen if this development goes bad. But I still think that there has to be a level of trust that we have with the developer that we're passing this on to. And I don't think I've met anybody more reasonable than Ben, Tyler, and Gavin. So I think that they're going to cherish this building in a way that the community and all of us want. And I really, really look forward to seeing those final design plans.
I guess I wasn't familiar with the Purple Parking Zone. And so that it was helpful to hear an explanation. But I would oppose dedicated parking. I think it's important in that, in this meaning for residents or tenants. This is a public parking lot, and we already have assigned six or so spaces for government officials. And I think we have to leave it open. And the reason is because I want to be sure that our merchants downtown have parking places also. And we are preparing and planning for a more dense downtown. Obviously, with this proposal, we would be. And so I think it is, appreciate the examination you've given and explanation for parking because it helps me feel better that there's room for everybody to park there and, as you suggested. In your slide, maybe I'd like for Ben to come back. I mean, I don't know anybody else that can answer my question. Your slide mentioned 275,000, and we're...
The budget?
Yeah.
We were looking at over a...
2,750,000.
Correct.
And we're looking at, with your 2 million and our 500,000, that'd be 2.5 million. So the other, any other above that would be yours, your responsibility then, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Other than that, I think, when didn't you serve on this committee to select the... Uh huh, good. Because I wanted to be sure. Didn't mention that anywhere. I think, I don't believe just that the city is going to do anything with this property in the future. It's been allowed to decline, and I think this is a good repurpose of it. And so I'm hopeful that it is, that it works out. I wanted to clarify elevator versus lift. Do you really do plan to put an elevator in?
I think the original Bruce McMillan study had an elevator on the front of the building as you walk into the main corridor. Currently, the building is serviced through the exterior, or through the back of the building with a lift. I think we would look at repurposing that as needed, but utilizing the existing lift that's in place.
So you won't be putting an elevator in?
I hope not.
So how would you make it handicapped accessible? You wouldn't?
There is a lift on the back currently that we could utilize.
My experience with city lifts aren't good. They don't work most of the time.
And we would work with our contractor to find the appropriate lift to make sure it's accessible. Again, these drawings are extremely preliminary, so we don't have the exact details on that type of system, but we would hope to utilize that existing area in some way.
Would you be amenable to working like with the Historic Preservation Group or the museum people with regard to the kinds of historic references within the building? Or I think they would be a good repository of that. I think that they would give it a touch that would be very accurate.
I do. And that goes back to the comment we had at the Historic Resources Board meeting from one of the board members and calling out another feature that speaks to the history. And I think we would like to add that.
Thank you.
I'm 100% for the project. You know, for years, this has been one of my personal goals, was to repurpose the Community House because we're, of course, building new gyms. We don't really have good use for the building. I hate seeing it deteriorate. I think this project, you know, pretty much checks everybody's concerns. I mean, it's going to be protected by the city with the covenants. Done an excellent job of addressing all the various historical considerations, and the concept designs just look excellent. So I'm really looking forward to seeing that project get completed in 2020 because that's been on my list for about seven years.
You know, I forgot to say that remaining on the Historic Register was one of my conditions for any kind of support for the project. So I'm glad to see that that is a, that box has been checked.
I think, you know, originally, when we heard of this proposal, there was only one that I think you had presented, and then we sent it back to RFPs, and you were still the one that came out on top. So I think this is a great vision for downtown. And as I said earlier, the parking, you know, Houston Street Ballroom, that always has lots of events, it's very hard to park people, it's not convenient, that's the problem we have. But people park in a variety of places. Blue Moose has an event area on top of their restaurant. Parking, again, people find a variety of places to park, still within three or four, five-minute radius of just walking anywhere. So I don't think there's a huge issue in that. And in the other communities that I've been to, whether it's in Indianapolis or California, wherever it is, this is more of the style they're going towards. So it makes it seem fun, kind of work, but also it has that cool feeling to be in Manhattan. And that's kind of what we want. We want people who are young professionals to want to live there and enjoy the feel of it. And more people are working remote, so this gives them that option as well. I, you know, I wish you the best of luck in this. If it comes to fruition the way you see it and the way you envision this, this would be a boon not only to downtown, but to Manhattan in general. So, and, you know, we were, I was kind of concerned about being sold for a dollar and then the $500,000, $500,000 from EcoDivo funds. But I think this is the way it should probably be utilized, especially for young businesses locally and when you're making the community even a better place to be. So I don't have too many issues with this project right now.
Can you say something about what you're going to do with the exterior, Ben?
We would maintain the design integrity of the exterior. There's a few windows that have since been plywooded over. We would look to renovate or bring those back to life, remove the window AC units, and potentially some tuck pointing on the masonry to protect the building from future water damage.
And my own view on this building is it's pretty drab. When you drive by it, there's nothing that seems remarkable. But it is drab. So I didn't know if you're going to steam clean or do things like that to brighten it up a bit, or are you going to, you thought about those kinds of things?
I think we would want to work with our historic consultants, see what's possible before we go down that path.
So even cleaning?
I can't answer that question. I'm sorry.
The, I like Commissioner Butler, believe that we've been looking for use for this thing for a long time. Sometimes when you build a structure, you simply outgrow it or it doesn't any longer suit the purpose for which it was originally built. I think this is the case here. I also find that while this building has tremendous historic significance, and being a Rotarian, I appreciate what was done in the beginning to get all this started. I also find that, at least in my personal opinion, that there's not too many remarkable architectural features inside. So I think we just have to achieve a balance. You know, as Mel has pointed out to the commission several times as we go around the city, some of these buildings, some of which residential buildings right down here, just south of City Hall, have been preserved, and they each have rather remarkable architectural features, either exterior or interior. And then I think he gave us a book some time ago that showed Point's Avenue years ago, when we had many really good-looking churches, many built out of limestone, many of which are now gone. So I think the preservation of history is important. The preservation of some of these unique architectural features are important, but we've really got to be careful we don't mix the two. But I appreciate what you're doing. I would just ask you to think about the exterior of this building because it is rather plain, particularly if you're looking south to north at that flat side. There's not much entertainment there on that side of the building. So I know we don't want to mess with the features too much, but I think a good cleaning might make a difference.
Thank you.
So can we inter...
No, no action needed. This is just a discussion.
Let me just ask Eddie if you've got enough feedback.
Absolutely.
Again, I think that next actions, Ron helped me, are, would be a development agreement in some form to come back to the commission for consideration.
All right. Well, thanks, Eddie. Thanks, Ben. Appreciate it. Great presentation. Thanks, Bruce. So we'll go to...
Good evening, Mayor Dodson and Mayor Pro Tim Reddy and commissioners. As your last agenda item tonight, just for discussion, we'll go through a concept as we were just talking maybe a little bit about some history and what's going on or has gone on in a particular part of town with the downtown Community House. We have some other thoughts for you to consider as we go forward, looking about floodplain and how that's impacted some of the property values going forward and what we might do about it. And it's a new concept for us to think about, how do we do our floodplain mitigation and achieve those goals, but as it relates to commercial properties? So to talk about tonight, we want to really give you a little bit about our flood mitigation buyout program to date, and talk about how it's impacted our declining property tax revenues in those areas. Also, we have a specific proposal we want some feedback on tonight related to the Garden Way area, and then what might be some of the funding options for this proposal. As everyone's aware, in our community, clearly, we had a major flooding event over Labor Day in 2018, but this unfortunately wasn't the first time that we've seen Wildcat Creek flood. We had a major flood again back in June 2011 and also had some flooding since then. The pictures you see are both sides of Set Child's Road, where you see the kind of Plaza West area, and then also looking at aerial view at the Garden Way area along Anderson Avenue. What we've seen and what we've realized and people know across the country, whenever you have a flooding event, usually it has an economic toll as well. And so when we've had these multiple flooding events, it's caused a negative impact in those areas. If you look just at the Garden Way area and if you look at currently what's going on in Plaza West, we still have buildings that are under repair. We have landlords who are still trying to fill some of those units. Some of the commercial tenants have gone out of business in those locations. Property values will demonstrate up and decreasing in those areas on both sides of Set Child's Road. And then we'll talk about some of the buildings are actually being abandoned as well by the current ownership group. So as we look at this, the main artery there is Set Child and Anderson. So it is a key artery in our city. And interestingly, we've heard some recent conversations from the state of Kansas where they are considering some preliminary concepts that would actually take Set Child's Road down to at-grade level to meet Anderson. Still a preliminary concept, but KDOT might be working on some concepts. If they do that, that actually opens up some redevelopment opportunities where the interchange is and could collapse that interchange to a big interchange, but also free up some of the roadway where it's currently some of the access ramps. Again, preliminary, but something that we want to keep our antenna up and give you a little heads up on. But then if we look at the area holistically, where we're talking about both sides of Set Child on the south side of Anderson, where we have flood mitigation goals, but is there a way that we can encourage reinvestment in that city property or those parcels around there that are currently in private hands? As we think about this, we actually engaged a KSU class this spring, and we're engaging them again over summer and fall, to kind of really look at these areas and give us some kind of pie in the sky, what could maybe these areas look like, knowing that we have some flood mitigation goals? And how could we turn some of those properties into more open space, green space amenities? And so as you see in the design there, there is one concept that came out of this process with the KSU class about pushing all redeveloped area towards Anderson Avenue. And maybe what was, we have Landmark Bank, there's a car wash, just some of that area to open up that green space. Again, totally conceptual, it's nice to get some outside perspective. Um, but really, how do we evaluate some concepts when we buy out property with flood mitigation funds to actually turn it into usable green space that's an amenity for us? Um, but also, think about, this is a clean slate, as we think about some of these areas going forward, about what these properties can become. And really, I tell you to open up our thinking is that we have even considered, would we come to you as a TIF district for this area for redevelopment? Think about what Plaza West is now, think about what the Garden Way area is now, as we're doing some of that buyout. But again, it's a concept that we think could have merit down the road, but also provide some funding mechanism going forward, as we think about what these areas could be for redevelopment. So what we currently have is the flood mitigation buyout program, where there's a recent study out that for every $6, um, is saved with buyout for the dollar spent, for residential properties. That means you don't have to go back and do the renovations of those properties, don't have to worry about the public safety concepts when you have first responders reporting to different life events when there's major flooding. Also, since 2011, here in the city of Manhattan, we've used, lies a partnership with FEMA in the state to do about 1.1 million, $1.1 million for six dwellings. And I'll show you those locations in a second. What we've done for our split is we've used the stormwater fees or funds to about $276,000 for these six properties. We currently have an application in right now, where we're applying to buy a 12-unit apartment complex and three single-family residences, and you'll see that spread throughout the Anderson Avenue corridor. And so what that means is that we are able to qualify for the FEMA funds because there's a FEMA floodplain, and when you use FEMA dollars, there's more restrictions. But then we also have the community floodplain, which is outside of the exact path and flow, but it has a little bit more leeway on what you can do with that space. So there's two kind of distinctions when we're talking about floodplains. So you can see there in the yellow, that is the recent buyout properties. And so there's Anderson Avenue, and these are all south of Anderson Avenue. But on the west side of Seth Child's, there's three kind of there by the old fire station, um, where we now have some water distribution operations. You can see the yellow property there as well, is down, um, from University Heights, down that area. And then if you go across, there's also the blue boxes you can see on your screen. Those are the future ones that we currently have the application in for right now, where we're looking to buy out those properties. One there is the apartment complex in the Garden Way area. And then if you look at the other areas there, are the more residential. Well, they're all residential, but the apartment complex is a bigger unit for us to buy out in the Garden Way area. So as we think about this, we have a mix of residential, and that's where our focus with our flood mitigation program going forward, or been to date. But thinking about, there are some commercial properties that have been significantly impacted through the recent flood over Labor Day 2018. And so again, FEMA allows their funds to be utilized for commercial buyout, but the state has not adopted those same rules or regulations to support that. So it's really not an option for us to use FEMA funds to buy out commercial properties. But again, as we said, if you have no federal participation, that also means there's no restrictions or no limits on future development. Generally, when you use FEMA funds in the floodplain, it has to be green space. It can't be redeveloped, so it's open space. But if we use local dollars, there aren't those restrictions on how those areas may be redeveloped or repurposed going forward. Thinking about that, as we think, this is a new concept for us about doing commercial-focused buyout programs. So what would be a framework that we want to prevent or provide, um, going forward? And so it'd be ensure the businesses relocate within the city limits, because if it's a commercial property, how can we make sure that stays in the community? Also, can that new development, if they move out, we do a buyout, if they move to another location in the community, is it a sizable investment in new property and adding more to the tax roll going forward for a net gain? Also thinking about, is there economic development? We've talked about, not necessarily the funding, but can we have a focus on increasing the number of new jobs if we would do a commercial buyout? And then again, what is the additional community interest? Um, is it a right-of-way that we have additional land that we may be able to put in play for road projects? Is there additional land that we want to have in play for some parks enhancements? So there are some other general community interests that we could use as a factor as we think about this concept going forward. So we do have a specific pro- proposal that we do want some feedback and discussion on tonight. And so in the picture there, that's a little bit grainy, is 1125 Garden Way. It's currently owned by Schwabe, an engineering firm. Um, and as we said, one of our interests in thinking about these areas with the flood is now we're seeing the declining property tax value on both the Plaza West side and the Garden, um, Way side. And so for instance, the land value's gone down nearly 90,000 alone on this building, 1125 Garden Way. And to date, Garden, um, Schwabe has moved out of that location to South Dam Road. It's a temporary position or location for them, but their intention is not to move back to Garden Way. And so the building right now is environmentally safe, they've cleaned it up, but it still has studs, drywall taken apart, no flooring. It still needs a lot of work if someone were to locate there as a tenant for them. But they have chosen not to return, because this is definitely the second time that they've been flooded out of that location. So, they are currently scouting a new location. They're anticipating that they find a facility or build a facility for at least $1.25 million, and then you have to add the land cost on that. But you can see we put some of the tax value implications on there, where they're going from a tax, um, payment this year about $19,800, to where if they move to a new facility, they could get upwards to about a $45,000, um, tax value. So, they also, in addition to thinking about their future needs to move back in that location or not, they're looking to grow the company. And so, as they think about a new location, they would look to add space that would allow them the opportunity to hire 10 new employees in the coming years, no timeframe. Um, so the concept is, we would think that that would be a worthwhile property to consider for your review and can come to you with an agreement for the city to buy out that property, um, for $290,000, and then cover the demolition costs, probably up to about $17,000 is just a rough estimate. Um, we did have it appraised by a private appraisal, and they came in with the building and land for $200,000. And so we're talking about .72 acres for this facility at 1125 Garden Way. And if you look around them in that development there, there's another residential, um, three-story apartment building. Then you see other commercial buildings to the north of them, the Dialysis Center. And then across from them is also a residential that's still being rehabbed. Um, so you kind of get the mix, it's a area that has both the residential and the commercial in this location. As I said, to date, we are using stormwater funds going forward. That's our intention, because clearly we are still focused on this being a flood mitigation overriding need. We don't want to have these flood incidents continue to happen, still have properties, and that's why we're going forward with our new application for FEMA. But as we're thinking about it, how could we maybe look at this with a different lens about reinvesting, and maybe bring in some other redevelopment opportunities to grow the tax roll and to repurpose these areas that are flood-prone? And so, a couple of ways, thinking about this, $290,000, if we would go forward with a proposal like this, and we still would bring you something more concrete, is we'd probably be looking at cash reserves initially to do this buyout. But to establish a program, we would look to establish a bond fund to complete the buyouts. That way, we currently put in the budget, this year we have $150,000 set aside for flood mitigation grants, to match our portion for FEMA and state. For the past three years, we've had $100,000 each year in the city budget for these flood mitigation grants for our share. And so, as we think about this going forward, that we could see there be more opportunities for some flood buyout for commercial properties, we'd want to establish a more, um, level fund to maybe basically use a bond fund. And so, as we're presenting this information, just, we noticed a discussion item for you tonight, is really consider establishing a commercial property buyout framework. But again, our overarching goal is to hit the flood mitigation purposes, so we can get some properties out of the flood, but also think about looking at things a little bit differently with a community reinvestment focus. And then also, consider evaluating a stormwater reserve fund or a short-term bond, so we can have a more detailed funding source for you as we go forward. And then lastly, are you open tonight for us to come back with a more detailed proposal, or a fully executed proposal for you about 1125 Garden Way? Um, this would be the first property in this type of program to think about going forward, for the $290,000 plus the demolition costs. And so that, and again, I think as we targeted with the community house, there would also be some stipulations before this buyout or payout would be paid. For instance, pay half of it when they have their building permits for a new location within city limits, so they're committed to building within the city limits, and then do the second part of the payout, maybe when they get their certificate of occupancy. So again, there's some ways that we can structure some of these commercial deals to ensure that we get the investment that we want, to go with the funding that you would support. And so that's a concept that we want to present to you today, let you know what we've kind of been thinking about as we have been working on our buyout and our flood issues for these two areas. And so we wanted a little bit of feedback tonight.
One question. Sorry, I'm starting to lose my voice. Um, in the packet it said, and you mentioned up here, the state is unwilling to use federal and state funds on commercial flood damage properties. Why do they have that policy?
A lot of it is, some of it is also how people, I think it's a state issue between, competing between Missouri and others. If they buy commerci-, if we're using the bargaining tool for commercial property, would people go over the, this is more for a Kansas City area, go across the state line and have kind of an incentive deal within that? And so they're just saying that we don't want to be in that game? It's the initial impression provided to me.
Got it.
And so, being in Manhattan, we're farther away from some of that competition and how people could use that money as a leverage for a different relocation.
So my question is, you know, we, we bought out some residential property, but that's all hinged on getting the FEMA money.
Yeah, we've done it with-
I mean, if, if we don't get the FEMA money, we don't buy it out.
That's generally the practice.
Now, these commercial properties, and you got that whole restaurant row, I mean, how many commercial properties are we talking about, and why would we start with this one?
Uh, two, well, a couple of factors. You're right, do we need a framework as to, would we work only in those areas with declining property values? Look at those businesses that are willing to relocate in town at a much larger facility to have a higher tax value, and have maybe some employment component to it? So, there would be some judicial thought about how we do it. But you're going to see in a coming July, probably agenda, will be some consideration about actually one of the abandoned buildings in Plaza West coming to you for demolition. So a lot of folks have not rehabbed or done the work they need to, to recover from the flood. And so, we are seeing some of that as a nuisance. Um, so-
Yes, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I think probably a lot of these buildings shouldn't be rebuilt or reused in any way, shape, or form. I mean, that's the problem, we keep putting them back where they're going to flood again. So I, so I'm not, but this looks to me more like an economic development initiative. I mean, it looks to me like if you want to create a, a fund to actually do this revolving, that it's, and, and you're pushing economic development, that why shouldn't it be economically development-funded? Because we just seem to be raiding that water fund for, for everything. There's not going to be anything left in there to, to ma-, to maintain the infrastructure. And, and, and these, these amounts, if we're going to start a bond fund or something, I'd be more inclined to say, okay, let's take, uh, you know, half a million and, and make it economic development, flood mitigation, for local businesses with a set of criteria that you come up with. I, I think that makes sense, and then it doesn't keep, you know, robbing that water fund for... You know, I'd like to see that money go into fixing the infrastructure.
And that's certainly an option we can discuss, as you've raised it. Um, but our thought is that this is overwri-, overarching flood mitigation purposes? Because for instance, this property at 1125, you can elevate that property with some groundwork, and you could make it maybe part of a bigger development later on. And so, the overarching purpose is first get out of the floodplain, and not to have to rebuild and keep going back through that. And so that's where we've put our focus tonight. If you want the feedback you're giving us, we can certainly consider it in a different light.
What is your definition with regard to, like, a, um, a multi-family apartment building? Is that residential, or is that commercial?
Residential.
For the purposes of this discussion?
For this, it's residential.
It's residential, so it's not commercial. So, what, don't commercial entities have the opportunity to buy FEMA flood insurance also?
By impressions, yes.
Yes.
Or, yes, secure insurance.
And so what we're talking about are those commercial properties that do not, that chose not to buy FEMA?
Well, we also need to distinguish, because some of them aren't in the FEMA flood zone. They're in the community floodway. And so I'm not clear right now, um, what the difference is between level or degree of insurance that you can get based upon what floodway or floodplain you're in. But we can get that from Chad in community development.
Uh, I am personally in the 500-year floodplain, or the .2%. And, um, I have flood insurance, so people, they aren't, no, 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 no one is prohibited from buying flood insurance. But, I just wondered, um, there are quite a few commercial properties that we're talking about, and on both, when we talk about both sides of the highway. And, um, I just have an issue with how we can afford to buy them out. Uh, when the state and the federal don't, um, then we would be picking up that, that responsibility. My higher priority is residential. Uh, and I don't believe we have completed the tasks we have with regard to, to, uh, tending to our residents. And I think there's a difference in residential and commercial for a reason, because it's where people live, and, uh, I, I think that has to be at least my higher priority. I could see some economic development use, uh, but, uh, it would take all that we have to, to buy out all of the commercial properties, just these. Um, and I, I also had a question about the, um, the value. It said the city hired an appraiser to evaluate the land, which came in at $200,000. Uh, so I'm, um, just struggling with what the actual value is for the 1125 property.
The current 2019, I believe is at 443,000?
Well, the proposal-
443,900.
You say here, the proposal would be to buy the, the building for 290, and, and then pay 17,000 to demolish, so we wouldn't buy the land, we're just talking about the building.
So we'd buy property and building together, the land and building together. So then we would demolish the building, to get out of the floodway.
So, but then later it says that the city hired an appraiser.
Mm-hmm.
So it's 200,000 for the land?
And building.
And, okay, in addition to the building. But, the appraised value by the county appraiser, given the flood?
Is 443.
Is what?
443,970.
Okay. And has not gone down. You started your conversation this evening by saying that, uh, property values were declining.
Yeah, on this page here, so 2018, their value went down $90,000 over the course of a year. So it went from 533 down to 443. So yeah, it's declining value. And same thing over on the Plaza West side, where we have, like we said, we're going to come to you potentially for a demolition order.
Can some of these marginal properties be waterproofed in retrospect? Is that even an option?
They can, like in 2011, many of them renovated.
I know, yeah.
Water, some of these we hired, yes, you can elevate, we've elevated houses. We've used some FEMA money to elevate houses and residents, to raise them up above the flood level. Um, certainly an expensive proposition.
It's interesting to be talking about this tonight, because Keats is having a flood alert tonight with the Wildcat Creek, again.
But as you were talking about, the priority about residential-
I hope not.
That's, that's residential versus commercial. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to put out there the TIF concept. Because if you think about both these areas holistically, and think about what can we do from a flood, uh, flood mitigation, but also for redevelopment purposes, the TIF can help with that and address both residential and commercial.
Maybe TIF is the way we have to go then. Um, I would also say that I think the, from what I, because I've been serving on the Wildcat Creek study group, for want of a better term. And even the National Church Residence has, has said they would, they're renovating one more time, this time from the flood, Labor Day flood. flood, but they're, they had deep questions about whether to return, and so it is a pretty gut-wrenching decision with the amount of money that's at stake.
And that's why I think, can we get ahead of that? Is there a way that we can help foster those who may want to not rebuild another time or not live under that cloud for another time? And can it serve a different purpose for us? Want to get them out of the floodplain, but then think about how that corridor with declining tax values could be revitalized.
I think Commissioner, you made a statement about, that we were just targeting those that didn't have insurance, and that's not the case. I mean, I think that's, that may be the case in this particular situation, but it wouldn't necessarily be a basis of a policy whether they had insurance or not. Obviously, if they had insurance, they would either choose to potentially stay where they are and try to flood-proof, or, or do some things like that, or use that to reestablish, help reestablish somewhere else. But, the, the focus here was, and then the reason for the stormwater fund was that these were repetitive losses from flood damage, as opposed to an economic deal, where clearly devaluation was occurring on these properties. And so trying to get them back into a situation where they're having an increasing value of property. And so, on the other side, on some of the properties you had indicated, I think the current tax value is zero. So, you know, we wouldn't be willing to offer incentives unless they were willing to, one, relocate in the city, and I think this particular firm has looked outside the city as a potential, so that, that we would realize that growth in that property tax base to maybe at least where it once was, but certainly on a condition where it's increasing as opposed to devaluing.
I'm just not interested in doing anything that's going to raise our tax, raise our budget, and that means the property taxes and use our sales tax. So if a TIF is the answer, and maybe some of our economic development, but certainly not all of it, because it would be easy just to run that empty that well, and, so you want to know what we thought. My priority is residential.
I have one really quick question that came up after hearing Commissioner Butler and Morris. The, in, in general, can we say that commercial properties cause more runoff than residential ones do? No, we can't say that, we're confident? Okay.
It all comes, I'm sorry, Don, it all comes down to the impervious area. I could show you examples of apartment complexes and their parking lots and how much--
Yeah, yeah. I guess, I guess what I was trying to get at is if, I feel like there is, would be too many commercial properties that we would want to buy out, and then how, how do you prioritize those against each other? You could potentially do it on the, what you said above, in terms of them buying a new facility, things like that, but I wondered if there was another way that, if we're using stormwater funds to help mitigate flooding, could we also estimate how much runoff this business caused? And if it causes a high amount of runoff, then prioritize it above some of the others if what we're trying to do is truly mitigation, and not just economic development, that's just a thought.
Yeah, so, you know, when Warb Morgan built his car collection museum, he said, his bank, I think, said, insurance company said, he should really buy, like, flood insurance. And he said, why am I going to spend $20,000 on flood insurance? I'm not going to do that right now. But he was persuaded to do that, and a weekend later, he had that massive flood. So, that area consistently floods, and there are some areas in town that we know consistently flood, historically they flood, and there's been organizations and committees set up and task forces, where we talked about infill, and we set up different barriers and structures to not let that happen. So in this particular area for Schwab Eaton, it happened twice. And I would think after the first time, there would have been some flood insurance bought, or something like that, too, because it's a commercial organization. Residents, and sometimes they don't have control on where they're going, or resources when they move in somewhere, and sometimes they just don't know. But I'd rather see some areas that are consistently flooding not have any more commercial on them, or not have any more residential areas. We talk about how to, you know, you talked about elevating this, or doing barriers, or all of these other ways of stopping flooding in some of these areas, but we just need to confine them to no development. That's what we experienced on scenic, at least the perception is, you develop so much, the water has nowhere to go, and then you have this flood happening. In this particular one, I'm hesitant, not only from the funding source that's indicated for the stormwater fund, but the fact that they didn't get flood insurance after the first time around.
And, I didn't say, I don't, I'm not clear if they had the flood insurance. I didn't say if they did or did not, I'm not clear.
Okay. So I'm thinking they don't, and I'm just making that assumption, they might have it. But I, I want to be clear on this funding source about how we're going to, I, I do like the conditions that are put forth for this, so it's not like just giving out money. I'm hesitant to use the Eco Diva funds, because we just kind of gave a loan slash grant to our previous proposal for the community house, so I don't want to keep tapping into those funds either. I don't want to make it a go-to for a lot of these things. But I need to see a better way to develop that proposal for the future. And I need more information on why more states aren't doing this. What are states doing for their commercial, commercial properties? I don't have anything to base it on. And unless I have more information about what other communities and other states are doing, I can't move forward on this proposal, because it's the only one I know. I don't know what other options look like, because we are not the first ones to have these. And currently, there's a variety of states that have flooding issues, and I want to see how they're addressing their commercial lots. So I would, I would just like more feedback on what other communities are doing before we move forward with anything.
Couple of comments here. One, on this particular property, you know, if their taxation right now is yields $19,000, and we, we forecast that if they move to a reasonable location of the size, they think we'll then get 45,000. So the payback on this amount is, again, something like 12 years, which is not too bad. But, I would not like to see us include some incentive, or that disincentivizes someone from buying flood insurance. Because, you know, if you're in commercial business, if that first flood comes and you get your payment from your insurance, one of the things you ought to entertain is moving. So I don't, I don't think we ought to reward somebody for maybe making a bad choice. I'm not insinuating anything about 1125, I'm just, kind of a matter of policy here on that. The other one is, when we, when we look at FEMA, for example, and then you turn your attention to Town West, if we pulled all those buildings up towards Anderson, that floodplain still exists behind the building. So, but arguably, that would be parking lot now, and not, the flood wouldn't come into the buildings from the back. As we, it's actually the city's proposal that we lower those intersections to at grade. And there's a lot of fill in there that arguably could be used to protect some of those properties. But I agree with Commissioner Butler, that some of those buildings that chose not to do anything just need to be raised, because without that kind of protection, those are always going to be at risk. And then it's up to the commercial property to either insure or not. But that piece of property at Town West, isn't that the name of that place? Plaza West, is so potentially valuable. It is arguably as valuable as the Dylan's Lot across Catacorna, across the Seth Jaws, that we've got to do something. So, you know, I've seen that long-range plan, where we move those buildings up to the, to the front, but that's going to take a lot of heavy lifting, because the owners of those buildings aren't just going to do this voluntarily. I think that museum is a case in point. He's already invested heavily in there, so moving the building is probably not big on his hit parade. But I think we've got to be inventive, so, kind of where we are here, are the buildings on the far east of that development probably can't be salvaged, just from a practical standpoint, because they're already at zero value almost. So we might just raise those depending on the developer. But then we may want to look at, and I think we've talked about this before, how do you better protect the south end of those buildings from a, from another flood? And we'll have a lot of fill if we take those grades down to zero, or down to at grade. But we may want to look at that and see if that's practical. It may not be practical, and then we've got to find another solution. But if we can protect those, these existing buildings, it may be cheaper in the long run for us than trying to move them. But I think one of the things we're trying to do here also, with this 1125 building in Schwab Eaton, is make sure that businesses like this stay in our community, and don't take an option to move somewhere else. So, that's part of the calculus, too. Yeah? We haven't opened it to, fully comment? Any other comments?
I just, I don't have a problem with coming up with a plan, you know, but again, I think the funding source is the hang-up. I'd prefer economic development, and I think we've got to have a laid-out process, whereas Ron says there's an advantage to the city. You want to keep the business here, and we've got to look at that, and, and so, they'd have to apply for it, and you'd have to have a set of criterion. And I'd use part of the economic development fund to fund it, but I'm not saying spend it all either. I'm saying, you know, start out with half a million at most, and say, okay, here's the process, and then let people apply, and we could, we could formalize it as, as a system. And then we'd have to select, you know, who gets to participate in it or not, based on the application.
I guess I only asked two questions and never actually said how I felt. I'm also generally supportive of seeing a further drawn-out plan. I think the only problem that I'm having in my head is kind of what Commissioner Butler just insinuated, or, is almost the mixing of, like, what is our actual goal? Is our goal to mitigate flooding, or is our goal economic development? Because if it's economic development to keep these businesses alive in the community, then we should find a way, after these floods, to aggressively approach those businesses with economic development funds. But if our goal is to mitigate flooding, then how we prioritize those businesses should be different. Because right now, it seems like how we would prioritize is based more on the revenue that they would generate in a new facility. But, that should only be the case if our goal is economic development. So, maybe it's just because I haven't fully wrapped my mind around the concept yet, and you can come back to me with something genius. But I, I guess that's the one thing that I don't fully understand, is what's the end goal? What's, and I know both of them are end goals, but what's the more important end goal? And then that also helps me establish what fund it should come out of.
I appreciate that comment, the, the one, I think it'll be difficult to develop a plan that fits everything. I mean, this is a unique area, bec, you know, if we didn't have the extra filler from taking the grades down, that would potentially be a regrading opportunity and a redevelopment opportunity for a lot of businesses. You know, and, and developing a redevelopment area and getting a developer that's interested in doing that, then you've got to buy that property out, and, and so your, your TIF has got to be pretty significant and timed appropriately. So, it, it would be a challenge. I mean, there's, there's kind of two economic development goals potentially for that area. One is to help the relocating business, but it's also to potentially redevelop an area that, that might have some potential for redevelopment, as opposed to just saying, we're going to take this area that's historically contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars in property tax and just call it green space. You know, so, those are, those are tough issues, and, and I think they do come together in specific areas where you may have other flood zone properties that have just more single-purpose issues.
Thank you. Well, let's hear from the public on this. If there's anyone in the public who'd like to comment, please come forward. I'd like to hear from you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Brad Fagan. I'm at 1805 Kingwood Drive. I'm the president of Schwab Eaton, and so just to give you guys a little bit more background about the business in general. Schwab Eaton's been in Manhattan since 1957, so 62 years, you know, supported the community. So, I think it's a good bet, I mean, since then, we've expanded to three other cities in Kansas, and I think we'll go and be around here for a long time. I've been with the company since 1984, so 35 years, which was at the same time that the business moved to the location there at Garden Way. And, now I don't know exactly what was going through the minds as far as why they picked this particular place to go, but I do know that it did go through the planning process for the city of Manhattan at the time, you know, the planning board, the city commission, and all this stuff. And, you know, at that time, the, the floodplain, the flood boundaries, the Wildcat Creek, were quite a bit smaller than what they are now. And so I think, you know, it, you know, I've heard some comments made in the past before from certain people where, where they said, where these businesses, where there's the apartments or whatever, that they went into this place knowing all the risks that were down there. And, you know, if that's the case, you know, I think the city also was looking at, at that also, you know, aware of, they had the same best information that everybody else did. And so, you know, I think that what we're doing as far as looking ahead is, you know, the increased, the amount of property tax that we might pay for another potential location, I think, like you had said, Commissioner Dodds, is the, is the payback period is to make up for the difference. And I, you know, the place that we're looking at, we're looking at, you know, increase in our footprint, having additional space that we would rent out right now, that we would possibly eventually move into. The comment about, you know, of us flooding before, actually, that occurred actually in 2010 and 2011, and the amount of flooding that we got at those times was about like that. And, it was enough, it wasn't enough, the very next day on both those occasions, we were back in business. I mean, we had some fans up and dehumidifiers, but it was never enough to stop us from doing anything. And also, I'm also on the Wildcat Creek Advisory Committee, and the last meeting that we had, there was quite a bit of discussion that was made about insurance. And what if, the way I came out of it was, nobody knew exactly what flood insurance covered and what the home insurance covered. And I, the comment that was made at the end was, well, you're just going to have to buy both, and then you'll find out after the event what it's going to cover. And, and we had looked at, into getting insurance, especially after the 2010 flood, and again in 2011, and everybody we talked to was saying that basically all that that's going to cover is just your mechanical equipment in the basement, you know, furnace, HVAC, all that stuff. And so, from our point of view, for what the premiums were that we were going to have to pay, it wasn't worth it, and that we were willing to take the risk, considering what we had to pay to get the place back up in order, which, I mean, at that time, we didn't even have to replace, it was so small that we did not have to do anything with the baseboards, we didn't do anything with the sheet rocks, we had to pull carpet out, it was, and just basically clean up. So, for what we were looking at as far as paying for premiums, it wasn't worth, we didn't have to do anything with any of our mechanical units or anything at that time also. So as far as like the cost-- So, as far as like the cost and what we were looking at, you know, at those times, again, looking at the best information that we had with where the 100-year floodplain boundaries were and what, you know, what Mary Knapp and any of the local climatologists had to say as far as the storm events, you know, they were saying, "This is unprecedented. This is like a 200-year storm." I mean, we were, we have our own stormwater frequency charts and everything, and it's like...
Excuse me. Sorry to interrupt. My phone's dead, but I've been timing it on my computer and it's been five minutes.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. I wasn't able to use the timer, because my phone's dead.
So, anyway, anyway, those storms were off the charts, and, you know, we were like of the opinion, using the best information that we had available, this storm isn't going to happen again. And, I mean, this last one, we had people where they had 12, 13 inches, and we were like extrapolating that that was like 12, over a 1,200-year storm. So, anyway, I need to finish up, but just for some things to consider. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Well, this is probably not a very rewarding discussion, but hopefully you got a few things out of this. All right. So, I have to, we, when we read the consent agenda, there was an item K that had a paragraph set below the item, and it was for the selection of commissioner to volunteer to serve on the selection committee for the Kimball Avenue Expansion RFQ. So, does anyone... So, yeah. So, when the meeting beforehand, Commissioner Butler said he would like to serve on that commission, so everyone is in agreement, we'll select Commissioner Butler. So, there being no further business before the commission, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.